Turn off cell phones or turn them to the silent feature. The hearing this afternoon is being streamed on YouTube Live. I would ask all those who come forward to speak to an application today to use the microphones provided so that all the discussions can be heard clearly. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipwah, and the Hadnashone, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must complete a decision request form. These forms are available in the hearing room at the end of the horseshoe. Please ensure that you include your email address on this form because the Toronto Local Appeal Board will send notifications and appeal updates by email. Once completed, please give the card to committee staff before you speak or leave them in the black drop box at the end of the row. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, or in limited circumstances to the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of each decision of the Committee of Adjustment. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications have individuals present other than the applicant who wish to address the committee. I will call each item in the order that is listed on the agenda and will ask for individuals to identify themselves. If there are people present in interest, the matter will be held, the application will be held, until all the non-contested applications have been dealt with. So if an item is held, we strongly encourage the applicant or his agent to meet with the interested parties outside of the hearing room to discuss and/or resolve the concerns or issues. On the other hand, if no person is present in interest, the item will be called in its order on the agenda for uncontested applications. Where an application is uncontested by the agent or applicant, will proceed with their presentation if required by committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or his agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are approaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium and clearly state your name and your address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you have a written submission from which you read, please hand it to the Deputy Secretary of Treasure when you are finished. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee if required. Please note that the committee may not entertain extensive revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may instead decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, people in interest, either in support or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views. However, covering the same points is not required and will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will have an opportunity to rebut, however, only to those issues which were raised by the speakers. And that will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. If there are any declarations of interest by panel members or staff, I'll ask them to be identified now. Seeing none, I'll ask if there are any files to be closed. No files to be closed. And deferral requests?
I'm not aware of any unless there are people in the room that might want to defer.
Is there anyone in the audience with a request to defer, an application that is scheduled to be heard today? Seeing none, I shall carry on then. All right, I will now vet the agenda for this afternoon. We'll be beginning with application number 19, which was actually held over from this So I'll ask, is the applicant here, please? Thank you. And people here in interest? Very good, okay. So number 19 will be held as a contested application. And we jump to number 21, 491 Glen Lake Avenue. Applicant, thank you. Persons here in interest? Thank you very much. There is someone here in interest, so number 21 is held. 22, 551 Atlas, applicant. Anyone in interest to speak? 23, 176 Glen Road. 24, 9 Fairview, oh, sorry, is the applicant here for 23, 176 Glen Road? Not yet, obviously. Okay, thank you. Number 24, 9 Fairview Avenue, applicant. Persons in interest? Thank you. 24, someone is in interest, so that will be held. Number 25, 61 Lewis Street, applicant. Persons in interest? Number 26, 25 Glen Lake Ave., applicant, thank you. Person in interest over here? I beg your pardon?
They're together.
No, is the person behind?
They're together.
Oh, you are with the applicant. Did you raise your hand? No? Oh, okay, that's fine, all right. So 26, there's no one here to speak to that one, that the applicant is present. 27, 38 Gloucester Grove, applicant. Persons in interest? Yes. 27 is held. Number 28, 224 King Street West, thank you. Persons wishing to speak to that application? No. 29, 118 Brunswick Ave., applicant, thank you. Persons in interest? And lastly for this session, number 30, 44 Claxton Boulevard, applicants here, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to that application? Okay, then, in that case, let me summarize this segment. The following applications will be held until all the uncontested applications have been heard. Number 19, 211 Avenue Road. Number 21, 491 Glen Lake. Number 24, 9 Fairview. And number 27, 38 Gloucester Grove. So the committee will now move into hearing the uncontested applications. We begin that with number 22, 551 Atlas Avenue. On this application, committee has before it the following materials. Copy plan of survey site plan, floor plans, elevations, correspondence from Stanley Markovi, agent, including an arborist report. Staff report from tree protection planning and review, urban forestry. Two form letters in support, signed by owners and occupants of 552 and 554 Atlas. In opposition, correspondence from 549 and 545 Atlas. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano here on behalf of the owner.
Thank you.
So this is an application for a building additions, and the description of the application shows some of the technical aspects of the proposal. What you will see on the overhead is a site-
Let me see if our committee is in need of a presentation or whether they might wish to go right to questions. So, committee members, number 22. Presentation, okay, let's have a quick presentation, please.
So we'll see on the site plan that there's a site plan that shows the existing footprint, and the existing footprint. So the side yard setbacks exist. So on the north side, there's a right-of-way with a neighboring property, and on the south side, it's a 0.3-meter side yard setback that exists. So the proposal is for a building addition, and it's going from a bungalow to a two-story dwelling. So it's called a three-story addition because the basement level is closer to grade than the first-floor level. If we look at the height, what we'll see is it's got a bit of a hybrid of an elevation. The front elevation has got a modern look because of the building addition part in order to try to minimize the height. So we see that the 9.05 meters is the main wall height variance, and then the 8.13 meters is the eaves. So that's along the sides, and the rear is less than the main wall height permissions under the bylaw. So the variance is only for the front. That's what you'll see on the side elevation. You'll see the 9.05 and then the 8.13. So this shows the side elevation. So the rear balcony is actually off of the first floor. So you will see in this elevation that below grade, below that thick line underneath where the stairs are and the front porch, that the basement is closer to grade where we're walking on the land next to the building than the first floor. So the entirety of the basement is counted as gross floor area. So that's what triggers the floor space index variance. So if we weren't including the basement, the proposal would be a 0.7 times FSI, which is actually less than the 0.8. So many of these variances, so floor space index includes the basement, that's why it's at 0.984, but there are other buildings, like houses as well as apartments, that are more than 0.8. I've already discussed the depth, that's because of the front yard setback and where the existing building is positioned, and it also helps to protect the existing city tree. The length variance is very similar to that. The second floor is at 18.15. The first floor is basically compliant. And the roof eaves on the south side is basically the existing eaves location. It is at the property line. So, subject to any questions? It's not, right now, they overlap?
They overlap.
Yeah, so the neighboring on the site plan. See that both on the south side? Both buildings, both of those existing dwellings are about 0.3 meters from the property line. So both of those eaves are basically touch one another, the eaves trough. Right now, I think they are, right now, I think they're over top. Like, their building is a little taller, right now. So the proposal is basically to have the same condition except it be at the second-story level.
Question, what elements of the existing house are actually retained in your proposal?
On the side elevation, you'll see, you'll see some boxes there with the Xs through them. Those are existing windows that are being closed up. So from the front, we'll see the front, the front wall where the front porch is, that's on the right-hand side.
So front wall is retained and the two side walls?
The two, correct. Much of the front wall, although it's being reconstructed, so then you can marry the two-story addition, right? So it's front side walls, and then it's being extended to the back and up.
Any questions for the applicant?
Hi. So there's an internal garage at the front, access from the front yard?
Yes.
And that's using the existing curb cut?
It's using the existing curb cut.
And then veering over?
Then veering over, exactly, yeah. That's maintaining the right-of-way with a neighboring property to the north.
Okay, then, if there are no further questions, have the applicant? Are you aware of the two letters that are raising some concerns?
Yes. I can walk through them briefly, because I believe the neighboring property to the south at 549, the windows do not align, so the window actually on that side is being closed up on the south, on the south side. The side yard setback is exactly the same. So the property line is not being affected. And actually, one of the, one of the benefits of the building addition and the basement being closer to grade is that there isn't much excavation that's going to take place for the rear addition, so that's not going to, that's actually a benefit to her comment about her garden in the back on the side lot line. So there's going to be minimal amount of excavation on the properties, there's going to be no effect on that side, and I don't even believe that the excavation's going to require shoring on that side of the building, so it's-
Have you spoken with her about this?
The owner has tried contacting them, knocked, and they've knocked on numerous doors, so they, they have never responded. Ms. Donohue has never responded. Mr. Lungu at 545, if I had an opportunity to discuss with him how the technical nature of the application and how some of these variances actually would not be variances under the old East York bylaw, I'm pretty sure he'd be comforted that much of what's being done here is in compliance with the bylaw. We can certainly excavate the basement much lower, and you'd end up being even in compliance with the 2013 bylaw. I think that was his main concern, just the-
Okay, then, if there are no further questions, let's move to a motion, please.
I'd move a motion. I think that all these variances are quite minor, and there are examples of two and three stories in the immediate neighborhood. And given that it's largely sticking to the same footprint, I would move to approve, subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Motion to approve by Mr. Reed.
I would second that.
Second by Ms. Chang. All those in favor? The motion is carried, the application is approved.
Very much appreciated, thank you.
Now, application 23, the applicant may have arrived. Let's ask again if the applicant is here for application number 23. Okay, applicant not present. This is number 23, 176 Glen Road. Okay, committee, do we want to delve into this one with, without the applicant present?
Maybe we wait till the end.
So we'll simply hold this one down pending possible arrival of the applicant. I'll keep coming back to that to see if the applicant has shown up. And we move on to application 25, which is 61 Lewis Street.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Shrazadfar. I'm here on behalf of the homeowner at 61 Lewis. We're proposing a two-story detached garage, garage at the rear of the property.
Michael, thank you, just one moment, please.
Sure.
I just want to read the materials that the committee is actually dealing with on this application. 24?
25.
The committee has before it a set of drawings, plan of survey site plan, floor plans. We have a staff report from the Acting Supervisor Tree Protection and Plan Review, Urban Forestry. We have a report from a planner, Toronto Region Conservation Authority. We also have correspondence in support, and that consists of support or no objection from Claire Wittenberg and James Railton at 63 Lewis, and a form letter in support signed by the owner, occupants of 59 Lewis. Carry on, please. I'll just see if the committee would like to have a presentation. Don't appear to anyone, sorry, let's go straight to questions, then.
Hi, can you just comment on the purpose of the garage? I understand first floor as parking space, but what's the intended use for the second floor?
It's strictly for storage space. Just with the nature of what the homeowner does, they just need additional area to store away camping materials and everything. And the reason for the additional height, if my, if the client could stand up, you could see, he's a pretty tall guy, so, so that's the request, why we want to go a meter greater than what's allowed.
Okay, thanks.
So is the, is the installation being insulated, and does it have plumbing or electricity?
There's no, it's not going to be intended for habitable, habitable space at all, and we've noted that with the planning department.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm quite sympathetic of tall issues.
Yes.
So, uh...
Do you have a?
No, you go ahead. I'm not sympathetic.
I'll, I'll move a motion to approve this application.
Second. Second by Mr. Reed. So there's a motion to approve by Mr. Clay?
The forest.
Okay, including the force, the condition of force.
Number two.
Thank you.
Understood.
And second by Mr. Reed, forestry to apply. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Application is approved. Thank you.
So all they have to do is draw someone in tall, and I'm theirs.
Number 26 is next, 25 Glen Lake Avenue. Applicant, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Savim Jokovic, the applicant and designer.
Very good, nice, thanks for that. Let me just read what materials we are dealing with. On this application, committee has a set of drawings, plus the commenting agency reports from community planning, city planning, Toronto and East York. We have a staff report from community planning, December 15, November. Carry on, please. Well, but let's just ask whether we need a presentation on this one.
I don't.
Don't think so, but let's go right to questions, then, of the applicant. I'll begin by asking, so, oh, sorry, no. You are here on the current application?
Yes.
Number 26. I think we better do that, then. So there is a person here, neighbors here wishing to speak on this one, so I'm going to hold this application down, put it in the list with the other held-down applications. And I invite you, you don't have to do this, but I invite you to take the opportunity to speak with the agent about your concerns and issues, perhaps resolve them outside of the hearing chamber.
Okay, will do.
All right, so I'm adding number 26 to the list of those held down. And we move to 28, 224 King Street West. On this application, committee has before it a set of drawings. We have a covering letter from Magnus Clark, the agent. We have a decision number B00216TEY, which affects the subject property, and site-specific bylaw number 3852012, 1B. And there is a staff report from the Supervisor Tree Protection, Urban Forestry. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Magnus Clark with Paradigm Architecture, I'm the agent.
Can I ask your, name your address, please?
My address is 2198 Hard Street East.
Please carry on. Let's see if we, if we need a presentation from you.
I don't think so.
I just have a question, just the purpose of the-
The purpose of the change of the entrances, the first floor is rather tight, so we simply needed to create a little more space for the vestibule. Within the existing site-specific bylaw, there is provisions for a number of encroachments, such as canopies, as we have drawn, and while it's an extensive list, it didn't happen to include a door. So we wanted to use a revolving door so that we'd have an appropriate airlock, and we could keep the hot air in, as required.
It's got nothing to do with accessibility, basically?
It's not to do with an accessibility. We have an alternate door, which is our accessible entrance with a push-button operator, et cetera. This is really about the principal entry, having an appropriate airlock.
And this, your proposal doesn't affect the nice paved area out in front of the building, getting toward the sidewalks is a kind of a square there, is that impacted at all?
To the extent that the revolving door sits upon it, that's the extent of it, yes.
Another question is that open forestry recommend a condition after number two, can you add to that? What are they concerned about?
I'm sorry, we haven't received a report from Urban Forestry. There's approximately six trees in the forecourt, and we're not impacting any of them.
That's my question, too.
I think they probably just raised it because work is happening in the vicinity of those trees, but it's just, it's, yeah.
We'll employ standard tree protection procedures.
Exactly, so they're just asking for standard condition number two.
Yes, that's why we're going to get a good area as a condition.
We love the trees, they're an asset to the property.
Very much.
I'd like to move to this application with the Urban Forestry Condition number two.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Chang, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you, committee.
On this application, committee is looking at the following materials. Copy of plan, survey site plan, floor plans, elevations, a cover letter from Lei Zhang, the agent, August 12th. Correspondence from Lei Zhang, received for November, and correspondence again from Lei Zhang, the agent, including presentation materials and two photographs dated 12 November. And in opposition, there is correspondence from 120 Brunswick dated 18 November. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Lei Zhang. I'm the agent or the owner of this property.
I'm the agent or the owner of this property, and I come in to do the presentation for this application, for this existing townhouse, actually.
Just a moment, I'm just going to check with the panel whether they want a presentation or whether they might just want to present some questions to you, so...
Okay.
Panel?
I don't need a presentation.
I think we just want to go to questions, so, questions for the applicant.
But just to confirm, these are all internal changes to the house that are happening?
No.
Can, okay, can you explain what the changes are then?
Actually, when I got this job, I come into the house, I saw the three kitchen in this unit. I talking with the owner, the second floor, the kitchen is illegal, and you cannot get the emergency lighter on the outside, so I suggest the owner remove the kitchen on the second floor, which is come back in the first floor and the second floor, only one kitchen on the ground floor. And when I go to the basement, I'm talking about the tenants, the tenant's working in the general hospital, and she said she's living in this unit almost four years, she still want to stay here, but I talked with the owner, say you have to legalize this in the basement first, so otherwise you will get the city order, something like that. So, the owner removed the kitchen on the second floor, and they go through the building permit. At the same time, I talking with the city planner, say the city planner say, based on the city's record, they never see the duplicates, something like that, in the city's record. They ask me to go to the committee judgment to legalize this basement, so...
So, it's all internal changes?
Yeah, to Peter's point, though, he's asking whether there's any external changes to the dwelling.
No.
All the work that's being done is inside the house?
Yeah, actually, I got the letter two days ago, which is the neighbors taking the picture on the 2017, but at that time, I did not join this job, right? And I read the neighbors' letter, complaint letter, say, the first of all, I measured on the site, the little box face onto the backyard, this only 4.6 square meter, based on the city's bylaw requirement, only the construction over 10 square meter, you need the building permit application. So, this was the first one. And the complaint letter have something wrong. This is a picture I take on the site. So, this is a wood box, this is rebuilt. When the owner buy this property, you can see the red hand this box shade, it's the same condition, almost rusted out. So, the owner rebuilt this box, but I don't know, because at that time is 2019 July, I did not get this job. And the city's inspector come in, and the city inspector passed this piece.
That hasn't triggered a, that hasn't triggered a variance, so... We're just dealing with variance issues related to parking.
Oh, yes, actually, I talking with the owner, if you want to rent to the three unit out, you need at least three parking spot, but now they just only have one, you need extra one. So, I talking with the parking office, this is available, but the existing two tenants, they don't have a car, so they need not, that's the reason. I have the email attached to the document.
Thank you, okay. All right, so we have, basically, both the variances relate to parking, and then the second element of the application is the legalization of the existing basement secondary suite. Are we voting on the legalization aspect of it? It's part of, the purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story townhouse by providing interior alterations to combine the existing upper-level secondary suite with the main-floor dwelling unit, and to legalize and maintain the existing basement secondary suite.
Right, so you're in it, sort of indirectly, dealing with the laneway or the basement apartment, because you need to provide the parking. If they had the parking, they would have just had it as of right. So, it's not...
Second parking.
The second, yeah, so it's not permitted because they can't provide the parking for it.
I just want to find out, on the hand, I see a way for here, that in my...
Yeah, and the applicant takes a risk doing that, right?
And we're not, we're not dealing with the rear addition, which, oh, the neighbor alleges is not legal?
It's internal.
Okay.
So, I would move a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Reed to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Clay to approve. Motion on the floor to approve, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion is carried, the application is approved.
Thank you.
We deal now with application number 3044, Claxton. This is to construct a new two-story detached with a rear deck, rear walkout, side yard entrance, and integral garage.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of committee. My name is TJ Secura. I'm a registered professional planner here with the owners of the subject property to present information.
Thank you very much. Just let me read the materials that the committee has before it. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, decision number A19801M, which affects the property. There's a staff report from Tree Protection and Plan Review, Urban Forestry, and we have support correspondence from 46 Claxton and 48 Claxton, and three form letters in support from 42, 54, and 56 Claxton. Okay, so, on this application, again, I'm not sure we need a presentation, but we can go straight to questions.
Hi, I have a question on variance number eight, which is the height of the garage versus the elevation outside in the driveway.
Okay, it's, yeah, it's not the height of the garage...
Sorry, not the height.
It's the elevation of the floor of the garage.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes.
Please.
So, I actually couldn't resolve myself to how the zoning examiner determined that calculation. The bottom line is, there is a positive sloping driveway. It slopes from the garage to the road. The elevation of the garage I have as 166.87. The elevation of the road is 166.5, so there's a downward slope to the road. Even the elevation at the curb is 166.69, which is still lower than the floor of the garage. So, it's a technical calculation variance, there is a positive sloping driveway from the garage to the street.
Okay, thanks. When I do the basketball test, the ball rolls to the curb?
Ball will roll to the curb.
Very good, thank you, okay.
Do you have a planning staff that you have question about number eight? Because I try to understand it myself, too.
The planning staff have question about number eight?
They put it, yeah, they put, actually, they put it as a variance.
Oh, you mean the zoning examiner?
Zoning, sorry, yes.
No, I have not had any direct discussion with the zoning examiner. I find that I tend to rely on their calculations, they do their own calculations, but my explanation to you is with the numbers shown on the plan, that there is a positive sloping driveway. So, however they've calculated the variance, I defer to their calculation, but you can definitely see that it's a positive sloping driveway.
Okay, then. If there are no further questions, committee?
I would move a motion. I think there's a recent redevelopment in the area that is quite similar in size and scale to this one, and in some, the variances are minor, so I would approve to, I would move to approve.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, thank you, subject to Urban Forestry Conditions 1 and 2.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve with forestry by Mr. Reed, second by Ms. Chang. All those in favor? Motion carried, application is approved.
Mr. Chair, members of committee, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe the applicant for number 23 is here, 167 Glen Road.
Thank you. Is the applicant here for number 23? Good, okay, then. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to application number 23? And that is, address, Glen Road, 176. Seeing no one, I will view this as an uncontested application and invite the applicant to proceed. To begin, however, I would like to read the materials that committee is dealing with. And they are a set of drawings and plans, email correspondence from city planning, community planning, and email correspondence from Heritage Preservation Services. Also, a staff report from Heritage Preservation Services received 14 November. Thank you. So, applicant, may I ask you please to state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Kyle Zhang. Good afternoon, member of committee. The address is 176 Glen Row, and we're proposing a garage on the side of the house, which created a number of minor variance.
Okay, just a moment, please. Just to see if we need a presentation, perhaps we don't.
I think we can go to questions.
I think we can go straight to questions.
Okay.
So, I will invite committee members to address their questions to the applicant.
I just wanted to draw some attention to variance number four, which is all about driveway width, and I'm just wondering if you can kind of give us a little bit of an overview of what's going on with the driveway?
The driveway, right now, it's very narrow, and we're proposing to widen it a little bit because of, there's an electrical pole right there, it makes it very difficult to go in and out, so that's why we're proposing to widen it by a bit, but not enough for a double driveway, just...
Let me ask you to do this, please. Would you put up your drawings, part of your drawing package, put up drawing 8.01, which is the site plan? We had a question about the site plan that relates to the data that shows some of the site plan?
Yes, that's the site plan.
Excuse me, would you mind putting up that drawing on the overhead?
Yes, that's the one.
Pardon me, okay. Now, in the list of variances, variance number four says the front yard driveway will be 4.29 meters wide. If you could point out on the site plan where that 4.29 meters is, because we couldn't find that part of the driveway on the site plan? Or that measurement?
It's unclear, but I think it's the three, is it?
Yeah, it's that...
I think the point zero six.
Yeah, there's a little point there, the little area.
It still doesn't matter. Pardon me, that's the back of the lot, right?
What's that?
Oh.
It's only because it's on, the lines cutting through that figure, you did not go of them together, so that problem, night does not appear on the site, that's why.
Right, yeah, there's a little area there.
Is that a sidewalk?
No, that's not the sidewalk.
Is those two figures added together?
Because we cannot read this point zero six or point zero eight, I cannot read that.
I think we're struggling with the math.
Yeah, okay.
Right, she's right, where you have to add those two numbers, where, yeah, it's not clearly showed.
Okay.
So, which two numbers, pardon me, so just, we can be clear.
Can you show them on the, on the site plan, please?
Right here.
So, what is that number?
It's zero point... One, you can see the one, I can't see the other.
I think, if it's, yeah, it's got to be 6.1 and then...
Yeah.
And so, those plans also show removal of a retaining wall, so what's going to retain the remainder of the yard?
Over there, it's gonna have a retaining wall as well, just push back.
Okay.
Yeah. Of the retaining wall, it's not very high.
That's the wall there. Push. Move it over.
Yeah, it's not very high.
Are you keeping the existing driveway, or are you demolishing it and putting something new in?
They want to put interlock.
Can we, I think the committee generally is suggesting in these situations to use permeable paving.
Permeable paving?
Pretty much as a matter of course, just because it allows infiltration of the water into the ground.
Okay, yeah, that...
Are you agreeing to that?
Yes, we can do that.
Let's go for a motion, then, if committee has no further questions.
You go ahead.
Otherwise, I will move for approval. There's a heritage, is there a heritage thing?
Yeah, I have a letter of their support to this application, email.
Okay, so, with the heritage...
Yeah, and permeable pavers.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then the new material, the permeable paves.
Yes.
Okay, then, motion to approve by Ms. Chang.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Reed. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Application is approved. All right, good. Okay, that concludes the treatment of the uncontested applications. So, we'll now go back to the beginning of this segment's list and go through the applications which were contested. We begin with application number 19, which was carried forward from this morning's agenda. So, could I have the applicant, please, for number 19? Thank you. And just before you get going, I'm going to read the materials that committee is dealing with.
Anybody here who is opposed to this application, if you can come sit in the front row? If there's more than one speaker, maybe just the speakers can sit in the front row?
Okay, just a moment, applicant, so, may I ask, among those who are here to speak to the application and interest, how many of you wish to speak? I'm just going to count here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, okay? Five is a large number. Do you have a spokesperson appointed from among your number? Is there any of you that is working as the spokesperson for the group? Do you have an appointed spokesperson?
My name is Andrew Bigger. I'm a resident of ABC Residence.
Okay, what I'm going to, okay, what I'm going to do in this case, then, is I'm going to limit, all five of you wish to speak? Again, short of hands, those that wish to speak, please. And you'll be speaking too, sir? So, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So, what I'm going to do, I'm going to limit you to three minutes each as opposed to five minutes because of the large number of speakers, and...
Mr. Chairman...
Mr. Chairman, if I...
And the key thing, excuse me, just a moment. So the key thing is, you don't need to repeat points. You should be addressing your own particular perspective on the application, what its impact is. And keeping in mind that the committee can only deal with the minor variances that are part of this application. Those are the things that we have jurisdiction to look at. Just before we get started, there is a large list of documents. Yes?
I will, for the interest of privacy, the...
I'm sorry, Ian, that's the, okay. Okay, so the before speaker, this counsel, is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Paul Cronus. I'm a land use planner at Weir Folds in Toronto. We've been retained by the applicant. I have no problem with the presentation by the multiple residents, that's fine. We've read their submission, presumably they filed something. I agree with you, as long as there's no duplication. I assume they're also members of ABC, but we don't know, but...
They don't have to be.
Yes.
Paul, I'm going to ask you to hang on for just a moment, please, if you will, while I read into the record the application, the materials that are here, because they are substantial on this application. So committee has before it full set of drawings, a covering letter from Sula Cogan and Eric Chung, applicants. We have reports from various commenting agencies, they are the community planning, city planning, ravine and natural feature protection, urban forestry. There are staff reports from community planning Toronto. There is a staff report from the supervisor of ravine and natural feature protection, urban forestry. On this application, there is a letter from councillor Mike Leighton. We have correspondence both in support and in opposition. In support, there is a, from Alan Vardy, 10 and 211 Avenue Road, a 21 signature petition in support, or having no opposition, signed by occupants of a number of addresses on Avenue Road, Roxborough, Davenport, and Douglas. We have in opposition the following materials. Correspondence from Mary Helen Spence of ABC Residents Association, Bill Pierce 90 of Pierce Avenue, Catherine Boer, Michael Killinger, Joan Fralito, Stefan Kulikin, Ian Carmichael, Barbara Nichol, Joan Boggs, Nora Pratt and Tim Torrey, Sam Wise, Rachel Raffelman, Richie Ketchison, Manasa Chaudry, Beatrice Ventoni, and Marcy Littman. So those are the materials which committee is dealing with. And I will now invite the applicant to carry on with your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. Again, my name's Paul Cronus. I'm a land use planner with Weir Folds in Toronto, retained by the applicant on... The matter before you today is variance to request the, to permit a use of a restaurant in the existing two and a half story building, and to reconstruct, and this is important, to reconstruct an existing rear deck. This is where the patio is proposed. Now, I'm assuming you've read the staff's report on this matter. It was, in my experience, I've been practicing planning just as long as Mrs. McLeod here, since 85, and it's one of the most extensive, comprehensive, carefully thought out report that I've seen signed by the manager, in fact. So they put a lot of emphasis in reviewing the application for a minor variance to use, which is, I agree, is an unusual variance, but it is one that is recognized as permitted under the Planning Act. It says you can, you have the power to allow a use through this process, as long as you can find that it's desirable, appropriate, minor in nature, and all the other four tests that you have to apply. So, as I said, the, we agree with the totality of the report, and this is the only professional planning assessment that you have before you, that finds that, subject to the conditions, they're fine. Now, we only, we agree and we accept all the conditions. The only one that we have a little bit of quarrel with is the one on the rear patio. In our submission, the patio is an ancillary and quite a use that is related to the cafe. Now, we're not talking about a full-scale restaurant like the Joe's or others in the area, which have a very extensive kitchen. In fact, one of the conditions you see is that there'll be no kitchen. So it doesn't have the traditional impacts, or what I can say, the perceived impacts that we heard from most of the submissions of the neighbors, dealing with garbage, which is required by condition to be stored inside. So all the traditional impacts that you would normally associate with the restaurants have been mitigated. We have direction in the city's official plan that says where you have commercial and mixed-use development near these neighborhoods, and there are neighborhood designated lands in the vicinity, less than 30 metres away. You'll have to, it has to be designed to adequately limit negative impacts on nearby residents with respect to, among other matters, this is noise, traffic odors, intrusion illumination, and location visibility of access and service areas. Each and every one of these points has been extensively reviewed by staff in their report, and I commend you to review it, where they, they, they talk about all these elements and how this is strictly low-scale services of neighborhood, right adjacent to the park. In fact, I would venture to guess, I don't have any evidence, but the ambient noise on Avenue Road and the use of the park will probably create more noise than just 10 residents who choose to use a patio in the rear on this cafe. This use is not a draw. It's a, it's a, it's a facility that, as you saw from the petition, is desirable in the area. Now, there is a long history of prohibition of restaurants, and that history has carried forward, and this is what we find ourselves today. It's no different, for example, you might be familiar with this very famous 0.35 density limit in Forest Hill, but we all know it's over 1 and 1.2 in many cases. And that prohibition has been carried forward over the years, only for the purpose of allowing you, the committee, to assess applications and assess impacts. We've had a new official plan that designated the area mixed-use, but it still says you have to be compatible. And I say, and I agree in totality with staff's report, that all the traditional negative impacts have been addressed and will be accommodated. On the patio, may I suggest that rather than live with perceived, we suggest a one- to two-year trial period on the patio. Then we can come forward again, with your permission, and show evidence, real evidence, that the patio does function in the matter. It's not going to accommodate more than 10, 10, 11, 12 people. Likely those who walk on the street or take their dogs to the park want to come in and have a little retrieve from the heat. We're only, and again, in addition, if you want to even secure it further, limit it between the months of May and October. We're not planning to have a full-scale restaurant, we never intended to, and I think the other condition in the staff report that eliminates those uses provides you with further comfort that it meets all the four tests.
I'll ask you now to start to summarize, because your time is running out.
Well, I think most of the concerns you've heard from the neighbors and those from, that you're going to hear, are duplicative and have been addressed by staff. We understand and appreciate that we're not here to rattle the neighborhood or introduce a use that otherwise not permit it. I can give you a good example. The southeast corner of Pierce Avenue and Avenue Road just went through rezoning, and I think it's been settled for an 11 or 12-story condo building. And part of that zoning bylaw proposed by the applicant was the elimination of the exception 122137 that we are here for today. And that exception says you can't have a restaurant use. ABC Residents Association was a part of that hearing, and I haven't seen any evidence to suggest that they oppose that use there.
Thank you.
We're not a restaurant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, just, if there's any questions, I have the applicant or the operator here that can answer any questions on the operation of the cafe, if you like.
That's good to know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next, the next element will be to go to the speakers who are here to speak, in interest, in opposition. So we'll ask them to come forward when their time comes, and to state their name and address. So you are counsel for ABC?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to allow you five minutes. The other speakers will be on a three-minute time with your having ceded to this gentleman your three minutes. Proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So just to confirm, and members of committee, my name is Andrew Biggert. My address is 1 Eva Road, Suite 206, Toronto, M9C4Z5, as shown on the card. I thank the committee for taking the time to listen to my client's concerns today that I would like to convey to you. Mr. Cronus just took you through his client's position with respect to this application, and I'd like to remind the committee of one fundamental and important factor that Mr. Cronus failed to address, and importantly, which is failed to address in the staff report, is that a use of a restaurant is simply not permitted in the zoning bylaw. They are trying to, it is not that it's silent on it, it is a prohibited use. The staff report does not address the four tests. I agree with Mr. Cronus that this is a long staff report. Well, it's a long staff report because it's attempting to fit a square peg into a round hole. What they're trying to do is say, well, we recognize that a restaurant's not permitted. We're going to ignore that. We're going to try and add some conditions to try and make this fit in a way that we think we can best make it fit. And it's never, ever addressed in the entire report, how one gets over the hurdle of a permitted use suddenly becoming a prohibited use, suddenly becoming a permitted use by way of a minor variance. And if I can take you to my correspondence to you, you will see that the third paragraph down on the first page of my letter of November 15th, it says, "It must first be noted that the applicable zoning bylaw, Section 122137, Bylaw 43886 explicitly prohibits a restaurant as a permitted use on the subject site." Now, this process, I'm not going to go through all the details because bluntly I don't have the time and I don't think it's necessary you sit and listen to it, as we went through this step by step by step, from the 19, from 1976 backwards up to 1949. But the city throughout its entire zoning process on this site and in this area, from 1949 forward, including the new zoning bylaw 5692013, retained the exception on these lands to prohibit a restaurant. So I would submit, with all due respect to the committee and the authority that the committee has, the committee cannot create a new use that is prohibited in the zoning bylaw. A, at law, that would be improper. Secondly, as it's never addressed in the staff report, nor did Mr. Cronus address it, how is it even possible to maintain, maintain the general intent and purpose of a zoning bylaw when one is proposing to do the antithesis of what that bylaw permits? You can't. And I cite the case, and I've attached the case, it's an Ontario Municipal Board decision, and I'll only go to the, I highlighted it for the tribunal, I hope that was of assistance, the City of Toronto True Prop Limited case. And you'll see, I'll just read from the highlighting, if I may, and what occurred here is the city, in this case, brought a motion before the tribunal, before the hearing ever started, where any evidence was called and said, effectively, you have no authority or jurisdiction to deal with this use because it's a prohibited use. They're applying for a minor variance for a permitted, for a prohibited use? The way you obtain permission for a prohibited use is through a rezoning. And the tribunal member, sorry, I'm now used to saying tribunal board member, said, "How can the variance applied for possibly be consistent with the intent and purpose of Bylaw 43886?", which I know is the same bylaw we're dealing with here, "when that bylaw specifically prohibits commercial parking lots in this area of the city?" It cannot. The tribunal member then says, "The city's motion is allowed, the variance applied for is denied, the board so orders." And within there, I won't take you to it, but the tribunal, the board member at that point in time, Mr. Mills, said, "The way to go about this is if you want to try and get permission for what is a prohibited use, is quite simply to file for a rezoning application and have it assessed." And I would submit, it's at that point in time that common sense would dictate, that's when you start looking at what restrictions should be placed upon particular sites, and you look at it in a broad context that we all know a zoning bylaw amendment attracts as opposed to a minor variance test, under just the four tests.
I'm asking you to make your summary, please.
So I'm getting close to the end of my time here, so I will simply reiterate that the staff report doesn't address the four tests at all. It does not address the issue square on how a prohibited use can suddenly be permitted by way of a minor variance. It attempts to put in a bunch of conditions, which I say is an admission of a recognition of a problem with the site, and it's a problem that shouldn't exist because that use shouldn't exist in the very first state. Lastly, I will say that a one- to two-year period makes no sense because that, again, presumes that the threshold issue has been answered, and I would also submit that Mr. Cronus's comment that they didn't want to rattle the neighborhood, they've rattled the neighborhood and that's why you have the number of speakers that are here, and on those submissions, I'd ask, for reasons of law and common sense, if I may put it that way, you deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for the speaker.
Do I wait or do I ask now?
No, you may ask, this, the speaker, my speaker.
Okay, my question is, this, the applicant has expressed that this is not a restaurant, and they intend not to have any cooking facility. How do you respond to that? We still get a restaurant.
Yes.
Can you, can you respond to that?
Happy, happy to answer that, I'm happy to answer it, and that just adds to the confusion. They've applied for a variance to permit a restaurant, yet Mr. Cronus stood before this panel and said, "We, we don't want a restaurant." And the staff report itself, and I've got them listed here, staff report calls it a cafe, a cafe, a small-scale coffee shop, a cafe-type establishment, and then a restaurant. So the staff report in and of itself, on the comments section where they assess this, they don't know what it is either.
Yeah, I understand that, I have read the report too. What, that, I think that's the reason why they will put on specific conditions that there will be no cooking facility. That will more clarify, I think, clarify the staff intention. And then, how do you respond to that? Is that a condition, is enough, to make sure that it's not a restaurant, it's only a coffee shop?
No, I submit that that's not enough. If, if one is there serving food to patrons who are sitting on a patio and paying for their food, whether they're eating coffee and muffins or donuts or bagels, whatever it might be, that is a restaurant. And as I said, staff itself, looking at it as a cafe, cafe-type establishment and restaurant, and the zoning permission they're asking for, the variance here, is for a restaurant. And, well, this applicant may have their own intentions. If this committee is to allow a restaurant as a use, the committee would be well aware that that use goes with the land and not just to the intention of this particular owner. So there is a prob, a broader problem here if a use of a restaurant is permitted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, while I've got counsel here. I do note that the OMB ruling that you shared with us is 1995, which is 25 years ago, and I think the world has probably changed a little bit since then, but having, I respect that. I also will bring to your attention the staff report, which speaks to a number of recent decisions. Maybe you and other counsel can speak to this, maybe enlighten us a little bit. But I do notice that in the broad area covered by the Fishley bylaw and the current requirements, three have been approved for restaurants, '08, 2010, 2014. One of them was the board that decided that. The other two were minor variances, which were applied by one of these types of committees. So I wonder, I'll probably pose the same question to the other counsel, but I wonder if you could speak to that.
Okay, just to clarify, Mr. Cronus is not counsel, he's a planner.
Oh, pay, pay your pardon.
He's a planner.
Pay your pardon.
Thank you very much for the promotion.
Pay your pardon.
And so, sir, what I would say to that, first off, is that the case I did provide to you is from 25 years ago, yes, however, it is one that is a longstanding case at the board. I've been practicing for 25 years, and I can tell you that, as you are sure, well aware, the four tests have not changed in that period of time, so the law has not changed with respect to what the four tests are. With respect to the approvals on these specific sites, these talk about eating establishments within the area bounded by the restaurant prohibition. I don't know whether or not those are ones that were necessarily subject to the complete prohibition. That language there is unclear to me as to whether or not that prohibition was, in fact, addressed in every single one of those cases. I will admit to you that it looks like staff has worked on that presumption that it is, but given the unclarity in the staff report as to whether they even know they're dealing with a cafe, a restaurant, or a cafe-style restaurant, I do draw into question as to whether or not that assessment is in fact correct. And it still does not change the fact that if we've got a bylaw that says no red is permitted, we have an applicant here coming forward saying...
Thank you.
We want red.
Thank you. Let's go to the next speaker, please. First, you can decide the order yourselves.
My name's Manasa Chaudry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I live at 95 Pierce Avenue, which is relatively close to 211 Avenue Road. I've been asked to speak on behalf of the residents of Pierce Avenue. I know what... I know what Ian is going to be speaking about, so I'm not going to say the same things. I just wanted to say that, from the perspective of those of us on Pairs Avenue, this is not a minor variance. This is pretty significant change to our existing neighborhood. As we've heard, there have not been restaurants permitted in the area for many, many years. And I think there's a good, and we feel there's a good reason for that. It's a quiet neighborhood. Yes, it's on a park. Yes, we have commercial nearby. But that's why it works so well, is we were able to coexist. And there have been instances in the past where there have been patios and there's been commercial where they've used it for entertaining. And it is extremely difficult to enforce any kinds of conditions. When we try to reduce noise in the area by calling and writing letters and doing all those kinds of things, it is very difficult and, if not impossible. So that's one of our concerns. So in terms of enforcing the condition of having this cafe, we also are concerned that the application seems to be for the entire building, not just the main floor. And I know the city report has put some conditions around the size, but we're thinking about the future and we're thinking about what does this mean for the future in terms of a precedent. And so it concerns us greatly that it's for the whole building. It also concerns us that it's for an eating establishment. And so I am not sure how black and white this is, but once it's approved for an eating establishment, does that cafe then, does the applicant come back in a few years and then ask for a liquor license and ask for all of these things? Even though those conditions are there, what guarantee do we have that our neighborhood is not going to be significantly impacted? In terms of the approach with which this has come forward, it would seem that the applicant has gone ahead and done renovations to the inside of the building and also reconstructed the patio, it seems to us. I'm not sure if it is or not, but the patio seems larger than it was before. So this was done without, from our understanding, the necessary approvals. So when we think about these conditions that are going to be in place, how do we know that this applicant is going to not disregard the conditions in the same way that the bylaws and the zoning have been disregarded? And we can't count on the property owner to ensure that they are abided by, these conditions and everything are abided by, because the previous business to the one that's being proposed was an illegal cannabis shop.
Time is almost up. I'd ask you to wrap.
Okay, so finally, the patio. It's unclear whether that patio should exist even if this is approved, but I can tell you if the patio's there, the city staff report says that there should not be a patio. We would like to know that if that patio should not be there, that it is removed. Because if the patio is there, we've seen from experience that there will be people on those patios, morning and night, and the sound travels in our neighborhood a lot. So we would ask the committee to please address the patio.
Thank you.
It's existing. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Okay, then, we have two speakers left. Each one has six minutes. Okay? I'm correcting that, just yourself and this gentleman. You're the two speakers to go. Very good.
Us two.
There's two of you, yes. Very good.
My name is Mary Helen Spence. I live at 85 Pairs Avenue. And as there's been some discussion about the planning report, I wanted to just bring your attention to a couple of things. The person who wrote this, the assistant planner who wrote this report, speaks on page five in the second last paragraph about the problems of, sorry, in the, yeah, second last paragraph, the problems of the outdoor patio. And he talks about the fact as, if a rear outdoor patio is constructed, well, obviously, when he wrote this, he wasn't even aware of the fact that it's already been constructed and constructed without the building permits that were required at the time. The other thing is that I wanted to talk about, we were talking about planners and planning opinion. Back, the last time that this bylaw was thoroughly reviewed was at the time, and it's a long time ago, back in the 1980s. But that was the last time that city staff looked at the bylaw, looked at it thoroughly to decide whether or not it should remain in this area. And I want to quote from you what Steve McLaughlin, the chief planner of the time, said. "Having examined all the possible kinds of restrictions for restaurants on Avenue Road, it is my view that such restrictions would be unnecessarily cumbersome and detailed. They would be difficult to enforce, they would be inappropriate for these blocks of Avenue Road that he's, we're speaking about here. A ban on future restaurants is the only way that the problem experienced by neighboring residents can be effectively controlled." This is a chief planner of the City of Toronto who examined this bylaw thoroughly. And as Mr. Biggert has pointed out, it's been looked at on and off since then and always been reinforced.
And how do you see the impact on you?
I beg your pardon?
How do you see the impact on you?
Well, we have had, actually, the experience of impacts about restaurants in the past who have tried to open up, commercial establishments who, again, illegally, have used their back patios for commercial purposes, selling tickets for concerts, selling tickets for opera nights. And we have been kept awake at all hours of the morning. We've been kept awake by people coming and parking on the street and leaving at all hours of the day and night. And there is a problem here with noise that emanates, we're not, there's nothing between us and this particular restaurant. So it's open park space. There's nothing to block the noise. And so the impacts that we have felt have been examined by planners, examined over the years, and always been maintained. Now, you asked about a couple of previous situations, and you asked about them. One at 175 Avenue Road, I think this gentleman asked, that was taken to the OMB, was refused by the city. The city said it should not be there, so another planner's in the city, five-page report saying it should not be there. It went to the OMB, and they approved a restaurant there under certain conditions, very restrictive conditions. And one of the reasons was it was quite farther away. But the restrictions, the relevant part of this, is that the restaurant has never been opened. So there's not a restaurant. It was approved, it was approved, I think, about 10 years ago, never been opened. And one of the restrictions was that there would be no outdoor patio. There was having to store the garbage inside in a room that was refrigerated and special treatment of noise. The other restaurant that came through as an exception was at 164 Avenue Road, again, never been opened, and again, specifically prohibited a patio. So those restaurants do not exist in the area.
Okay. Any idea why they didn't open?
Well, no, I don't. I think probably there wasn't, there wasn't the need for them. There wasn't, you know, there was not, obviously, they weren't commercially viable. I'd also like to point out to you that there is a letter that you received yesterday from the owners of the commercial property that are just next door to this property, who point out that at the moment, there are problems with this establishment. Leaving garbage out on the street, not packing it properly. You have them all, I don't have to repeat them. They're in the letter.
And you know the committee doesn't deal with bylaw enforcement.
Exactly. That's exactly the point. Thank you for saying that. Thank, I appreciate the fact that you understand that. And we're dependent on enforcement to prohibit conditions. So you've said it, and the chief commissioner said it, there's no way of enforcing exceptions and conditions.
Okay, you have 15 seconds.
That's it. I think you've said it. Thank you.
Just a moment. Excuse me. Any questions of this speaker by the committee members? Thank you very much. And last speaker now. And I do ask, if you can, where you can, tell us about the impact of what would happen if this was to go ahead. That's, we can understand and identify with.
Perfect. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ian Carmichael, and I own the house at 167 Roxborough Street West, which in fact is the closest residential property to this subject location. I've been a resident of this area for over 30 years. And from my house, there's a direct line of sight, smell, and noise to this location. What I think is important to understand in this neighborhood and in this location is that there's sort of unique topographical features that make, the reason we have these prohibitions in place really is because the residents generally are much lower than the adjacent surrounding commercial areas. And as such, the impact of noise, smells, sound, and vermin are amplified and accelerated through the actual topography of this neighborhood. 167 Roxborough Street West is indicated in the planning report, is less than 29 meters away from this site. And there is, all there is between this site and my property is open parkland. And so I would be subject to noise, smell, potential vermin, potential parking issues, potential garbage issues. All are so close to my house that they aren't able to be mitigated by any other way other than total prohibition. You know, this area has had these specific zoning prohibitions in place for many years. And they don't just exclude restaurants from the prohibition, they include all eating establishments, they include billiard rooms, they include arcades. It's a wide range. So we're not just worried about a restaurant per se. We're worried about businesses that have hours of operation that are not in context and in keeping with a residential neighborhood. So we do not like businesses that operate early in the morning, we do not like businesses that operate late at night and that add to the noise and the chaos of a stable, quiet We understand that this is an old prohibition. The fact remains, though, is that the topography and the geography and the relationship of commercial and residential buildings in this neighborhood has not changed since the Fishley bylaw was in place. Any planning reviews, any comprehensive planning reviews done by the City of Toronto have, in fact, they've looked at this over and over again, and I can go through the numbers, but they've looked at it three times in the last 25 years and have maintained, in fact, that it is necessary to prohibit restaurants in this area, restaurants and other sort of, other things, because the impacts and effects on the adjacent residential neighborhoods are so great and cannot be mitigated and controlled. We do not understand why we are standing here. When we have a bylaw that specifically prohibits a restaurant, the general intent and purpose of the bylaw cannot be maintained. So as far as we're concerned, it fails the planning test and should not be approved. We urge you to deny this egregious application. Thank you.
All right. Questions of this speaker by committee?
I have a question. I get the legal arguments and the history and all this, but just from a purely personal perspective, like, wouldn't you guys like to have a cafe you could walk to?
We have many cafes we can walk to.
Okay, but are those within your immediate area?
They absolutely are, yes. There are cafes at the corner of Avenue and Davenport Road. There's the Avenue Coffee Shop, which is a longstanding cafe. There's a cafe at Webster and Avenue Road. There's a Starbucks at Roxborough and Young. There's a cafe at, there are many cafes in the neighborhood. And as my colleague, Mary Helen Spence, mentioned, all of the other restaurants that have got, no restaurant has ever opened. And so we don't have any experience of whether or not a condition works on these restaurants because all of the applications that have had conditions imposed on them, no restaurant has ever materialized because clearly there hasn't been a commercial case for such a restaurant.
Okay. Okay. I'll now ask, shall now ask the applicant, you have an opportunity now to rebut specifically to issues raised. I can just recap them for everyone's information. The nature of the comments was in opposition both to the concept of a restaurant, and then more so, it sort of stepped up once it got into the outdoor patio element of it, ranging from its being a simple prohibited use, it leading to hours of operation that are outside the hours of operation, that are outside the hours in which a community operates. Overnight noise, using the back patio for things like ticket sales, smells, noise, both early and late in the day. Could you respond to that, please?
Yes, sir. Just want to start off backwards, moving forward. City of Toronto Archives, search of their archives shows that the property of 211 Avenue Road was a breadmaker, Mrs. Emily Pepper, that was there since 1938 and well past the prohibition that started in Farley in 1949. So this property has traditionally had the experience of serving the residents, in this case, fresh bread. This is the archives of the City of Toronto. So we're not introducing anything different to the area. Again, I want to emphasize, the City of Toronto bylaw unfortunately captures everything under the banner of a restaurant. We're not a Jozzo's where we have, and frankly, based on the history, I don't even know why they're there or how they could be there, or in fact, the property right at, across the street, at 183 Avenue Road, the Avenue Sushi. I haven't seen any permission for them. But having said that, we heard that ABC has supported a restaurant at the southeast corner of Pairs and Avenue Road. So we're...
Excuse me?
Right. I made this submission earlier, sir, and there was no rebuttal to it. So I'm only going on the fact that I, what I've read on the public record. Okay, so I'll put that aside. Just on the question of the patio, again, I want to emphasize this, to reconstruct, it's not to introduce a new patio, reconstruct. There's a door that leads on to this patio, and it's always been there. By removing the patio, we have to redo the whole back facade of the building. That would not be fair. And then, moving on to Mr. Biggert's comments, in fact, most of the comments we heard from everyone here today was, one, a process rather than substance. And Mr. Chairman, fairness, you asked a few times of everyone to tell you, what are the impacts? What are the impacts? And we kept going back to the fact that it's 1949 prohibition, so many years later, and it survived a review by Mr. McLaughlin because the restrictions are impossible to enforce. And that's true, which is why they left it as a prohibition to allow this process to unfold because you have more power to condition a use than the zoning does. So it's much easier for you to evaluate the impacts, as you heard today, and come to a conclusion whether they meet the four tests, much like the planning department did. And I must say, if Ms. Jane Jacobs was alive here today, she'd be here supporting it because this is exactly the kind of thing that she would love to have in a neighborhood, eyes on the street. So anyways, having said that, the case law, you're right, is 25 years old, it's been distinguished many more times than it's been applied. I used to edit for the OMBRs, and I reported many OMB decisions in the OMBR series on uses. In fact, I chaired the Committee of Adjustment in Oakville, where we dealt with use provisions. It's not unusual. It's quite common. And I have to say, just for the record, just for full disclosure, that Mr. Lord hired me. Mr. Lord is the chair of the Planning Tribunal at Weir Folds. He taught me law. He taught us about uses and variances. So I'm very familiar with it. And lastly, I've actually applied for use variances in the City of Toronto and on behalf of the City of Toronto. So it's not, you know, we have an evolution since the original prohibition by Mr. JR Mills. So I mean, I don't know how much more I can add to that, other than my experience and through 35 years, almost now, planning, I've done many use variances.
Thank you for that. Now, we'll see if there are any final questions of the applicant before we go into committee.
I have a couple. There's been a suggestion, and I'm not sure if it's in our purview or not, but there has been a suggestion that the deck at the back was not constructed with a legal permit. Is that your understanding?
Yes, sir. There's a long history to this, the deck. This is why it's important to notice us to reconstruct. There was no requirement for a permit to reconstruct the deck. But Mr. Trevor Swan, who's a zoning examiner, encouraged us because of a complaint to file for a permit. One was not required. And we have full record on this, you know, which we'll be pleased to provide you if you wish, but there was no need to apply for a permit to reconstruct, to bring it back to a safe state. So, but we applied on his encouragement through, because of a complaint. There's been eyes on this property for sure, as you saw here today.
There is, in addition to a boatload of letters in opposition, there's... There is... In addition to a boatload of letters in opposition, there seems to be a fairly significant list of people who are supporting...
Correct.
...this. I do notice in the material that I have, a number of them, I don't have their addresses. So I don't know whether they're people who are living in the area or...
Sir, I can confirm, and Ms. Sula Kogan can, that she petitioned the people within the sixty-meter circulation area of your notice.
So these are people who are resident within...
A sixty-meter notice, which coincides with your sixty-meter notice, not beyond the area, within the sixty meters.
Excuse me. The applicant has the floor and will proceed without interruption.
Oh, no, I'm the applicant as well. I just wanted to maybe add to the comments.
I wasn't referring to you.
Okay. If you like, is there something else on the petition that I missed?
Yeah, if I... Just to...
This is Ms. Sula Kogan.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sula Kogan, and Eric Chung and myself have spent many months speaking to neighbors in the community.
Just a petition, just a petition.
And going with the petition and asking them that if they are in support of it and if they'd like to see this in their community, to sign our petition. We did it in person. Some people signed it online. And the overwhelming response that we had encouraged us to continue with this application. When we started this off, we understood based on a quick review...
Sorry?
Sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry. Is this... Okay.
Yeah, so we have spoken to hundreds of people, literally. And that's the signatures that you see there and the petition that you see. I just want...
The issue we have at this time is the following one. That is, you're introducing new things now. This is not the time for that. So we are now rebutting, and the time is actually up for rebuttal now...
Thank you.
Of issues that were brought by the speakers and questions.
I think I have one more, but perhaps more. A council gave us, and some of the opponents gave us their perspective, very helpful, by the way, on some of the more recent variance applications in the OMB. Did you have anything to add on that?
Yes, sir, I do. Actually, if you look at exception twelve, twelve to one thirty-seven, there's a recognition for a delicatessency at 142 and 144 Avenue Road. It's no longer there, but it's recognized, permitted use, carry forward. What happened is, when the City of Toronto decided to eliminate the Farley bylaw, what they did is they introduced an exception in twelve to one thirty-seven, which is the... Not the twelve-one that's permissive, but the exception that takes away uses. They did that through bylaw two oh six two three, which is a predecessor to four thirty-eight eighty-six. So they eliminated it. They got rid of the Farley bylaw, but they brought it forward as a twelve to one thirty-seven exception. And that exception survived over the years, as you heard, through a review in eighty-two, and also carried forward as a prevailing exception in five six nine twenty thirteen. In that, they have a recognition for 142, 144 Avenue Road. There was a minor variance at 175 Avenue Road, which Mr. Adam Brown did, and then he appealed it, but parked it, and he filed a rezoning. That rezoning was subject to a staff report, which you heard resulted in a refusal. That refusal was appealed to the board, and that decision was issued in 2008 for permission with those conditions. There's been...
Sorry, this one... That OMB decision was for rezoning or for...
That's correct. So the minor variance, so Mr. Brown decided to take the route of not abandoning his minor variance, but having it pending on an appeal, but supplanted it with a rezoning. And that rezoning, so basically, I guess he said there was a refusal, and he said, this is not minor, proceed by way of rezoning, so he did that. And that rezoning application was subject to a refusal report by staff, which went to a hearing, and then there was a decision in 2008 that you heard, that allowed for that restaurant use with conditions. And after that, as reported in the report here, there's been a minor variance in 2010. It's an unspecified location. This is the second last bullet on that page. And then 2014, there was a further variance for 164 Avenue Road. And like I said, there are three other restaurants at 150 Avenue Road, the Sushi Avenue Japanese Restaurant, there's two oh two Davenport, which is a Jozles within the limit, and two forty-three Avenue Road, which is a church, which is a Godiva's seating capacity of fifty-plus. So there's restaurants in the area within the prohibited area.
Any further questions by other committee members? In that case, we're going to take this application now into committee.
Thank you.
And move toward a decision on it. So perhaps we'll start with you, Mr. Clay.
Sure.
If you could...
No, I must admit, I can see... I can see the points on both sides of this issue. I will tend to defer to my view that, you know, the city is changing. This is a major thoroughfare that has already a number of similar types of establishments on it, albeit I take the points from the opponents that there is some restrictions in place. I am a little bit convinced by a fairly overwhelming number of people who are in favor of something like this in the area. But again, there is a legitimate concern about noise that a patio might bring particularly. Although I was looking at the map, and I see that the park... There's no one immediately behind this restaurant, right? What's behind this restaurant is a fairly large park. I was going to ask someone whether this park is treed or whether it's... I'm not familiar with the park itself, but I wondered whether there is screening or trees or something.
It's very large, but in the area, there's some trees.
It is. It's fairly significantly landscaped.
Yeah, I get that this is up higher, and it looks like it goes down.
Thank you very much. We are in committee now. Only committee members are up.
So... But that's helpful. I'm not familiar with that park, so I am interested in its use and its geography. You know, I think... I cringed a little bit at the reference to Jane Jacobs. We've all read her stuff, but I think that's pulling a little hard.
I apologize for that.
But I do get the point you're making, that, you know, these kinds of facilities do animate neighborhoods, and they do provide meeting places for people, and I think generally improve and enhance the lifestyle of a neighborhood. So I generally think this is a positive development. So I'm inclined to be supportive of it. I think we need to have a discussion about whether in fact the patio is appropriate or not.
Let's see what other members have to say.
Yes, and I agree mostly what my colleagues said, that I tend to also, after reading the report, I tend to sort of agree with the planning report, that times changing, and then the only thing that the prohibition only survives is exception, indicating that the current bylaw is allowing this process to take place. So I tend to agree with that. And also, I do simplify with people who are concerned about noise, and there was... It's still a new thing for that location. So I intend to support a proof of with a condition that maybe have a one-year trial from 2020, from May to October, end of October, as a trial period for the patio, just for the patio, not for the restaurant.
What was the trial period you even think of?
Twenty twenty, from May first to October thirtieth, October thirty-first.
Six months.
Yes, in the summertime. Let's see how that works for the patio operation.
Staff, is that practical or doable?
I just want to clarify, the patio... The deck itself, if the restaurant's not there, there's no variances for that.
I understand that, but because...
If they use it in conjunction, and you want to have it tied to just one season.
Yeah, I understand that, because what I'm trying to say is I modify... I should just a modification for the conditions that imposed by the report. The report is to have no patio at all.
Right.
Yeah.
So you want it to have the outdoor patio shall operate for one season, beginning May first, ending October thirty-first?
Yes, that's my...
So this is... Just for clarification purposes, this would be the existing patio, or would they be able to construct a new one? I think they're looking for...
I clarify this from the... I think we can adopt most of the conditions that impose by... Or suggested by the planning report, except the patio. I think that we can modify it so that they have a trial period of one season.
I get that. I'm just saying, that's with the existing unimproved or unchanged patio. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. No change of it.
Well, if there were to be changes, it would just be through the regular building permit process, because that's not up for variance.
It's not for variance, right.
I agree with what both of you are saying. I think that this is a... I know there's fractured history in this area, and there's a long, ongoing basis for this reaction to this type of use. But I think cities change, and the junction used to be dry until twenty years ago, right? I think it's reasonable to assume that do a trial period for the patio. And I understand that it's not the committee's job to enforce and to be in charge of bylaw enforcement, but we can't take that into account when we make our decisions. I think that's a separate thing that the city has to deal with. That's not... That shouldn't lie on our shoulders. So I would support your motion.
Okay. Through you, Mr.... Sorry, Mr. Chair, just so you're aware, because you're relatively new members, and with outdoor patios, there have also been conditions imposed where there not be noise or music out on the patio, and that the patio be limited to certain hours of use, which is something that you would be able to impose.
That's all acceptable.
So Madam Deputy Secretary, you suggest that we should impose...
No, I'm just saying that those options are also available to you if you...
Yes.
Yes, if you thought that you would like to impose...
Is there a convention around what those hours might be?
I don't know what the hours of the operation are of the cafe. I'm assuming if it's a cafe, they're probably closed early evening, if not in the afternoon. But I'm not sure.
Sir, I... Just for your benefit, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of school, the prohibition on any music or anything like that, for sure. I mean, you know, we don't intend to play any music. We're not selling tickets for any events. It's just a small ten-to-twelve seat patio. And in terms of hours of operation, you know, people want their coffee at seven AM. No one wants a coffee at ten AM, at ten PM. So seven to ten would be the hours for the patio, for the patio, not the restaurant. Not the restaurant slash café itself, just the patio. Like, you wouldn't...
What are the hours of the café?
Well, the café, well, I don't know if we want to restrict the hours of the café, but not...
I just... I'm asking for the committee's information. What are the hours of the café?
Oh, the hours of the café?
I don't think...
Seven to ten.
Eleven till ten?
Seven to ten. Seven AM to ten PM would be the hours of the café. So basically, the patio would function with the café, and then once the café is shut, this patio is not functioning.
Seven AM may be too early for patio use.
Yeah, ten...
Seven AM too late.
Some people go to bed before ten o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, ten to ten. Say ten to ten.
I think ten is a little bit late, frankly.
Eight, nine, no?
Yeah, I would say that's a little bit more reasonable.
Okay, I'm going to give a try.
Eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
Yeah, so I'm going to give a try, okay?
But just to be clear, so I can explain it to my client, we're talking about the patio, not the restaurant as well.
Yes, correct.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
We are back in committee now, and one of the members is going to...
Yeah, I will be clear on that, okay. And I would like to move a motion to approve this application with a condition to the outdoor patio operating from nine o'clock to ten o'clock, and from 2020, May first, to 2020, October thirty-first, nine to ten.
Nine AM till ten PM. I thought we talked about eight to eight.
Eight to... Okay, now I could...
Further amendment.
Eight to eight.
For the outdoor patio.
Outdoor patio.
Okay.
And no loud music.
No music.
Yeah, and yeah.
No music at all.
I think that's what...
Yeah.
Excuse me, Chair. I think that's what you agreed to, it'd be no outdoor music.
No out...
Period.
Okay, no outdoor music, anytime. So that's my motion.
Okay. And then also, subject to the other conditions of this planning report, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. That is only to modify the conditions imposed by the report, yeah.
Except for number two. So staff recommendations excluding number two.
Yeah, those are still... Those still apply, yeah. One to six.
All right. So at this point, we have a motion from Ms. Cheng. Is there a second for that motion?
Can I ask... Excuse me, Chair. Can I get a clarification on that?
If you'd like me to read it.
No, I'm just... I'm going to ask a more fundamental question. At the end of the trial period, what happens?
They would have to come back to committee.
They have to come back to this committee and seek approval. Okay.
That's correct. There would be a temporary approval, and then neighbors would be able to report on how well it's operating, if it's a problem, and then you'd consider either continuing it permanently or still doing it on a temporary basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so motion by Ms. Cheng.
Do you want a rundown of what the various conditions are, just so everybody's there? So the first one would be that the restaurant shall be limited to the ground floor of the building and should not occupy more than sixty-five square meters of floor area. The outdoor patio may operate in conjunction with the coffee shop for one season, beginning May first, 2020, and ending October thirty-first, 2020, and from the hours of eight AM to eight PM. No music, artificial or amplified sound shall be played on or be projected onto the patio area. Garbage and waste materials shall be stored indoors. Any other uses associated with a restaurant are not permitted. No cooking facilities, and that the permit plans be modified to clearly denote all of the above conditions. So it has to be on the permit plans. And then hopefully through licensing, those will carry through.
We now have a motion on the floor by Ms. Cheng, seconded by Mr. Reed, with those revisions and conditions. So all those in favor? Those opposed? The application... The motion is carried, and the application is approved with those specific conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, committee, for your patience on this application.
Thank you. All right, committee moves on now. Okay, so to those of you who are here for the two-thirty segment, our apologies. Committee is still running through some contested items from the one-thirty segment, which have taken a little longer than we thought they would. So we are now moving to application number twenty-one, which is four ninety-one Glenlake And I'll ask those that are here in opposition to sit here. Are you the only person in opposition? Okay. Very good. And at this point, I think we'll go through this application, and then I'm going to take about a ten-minute recess.
I'll be brief.
Okay, very good then. May I just state your name and address, please?
My name is Sean Galbraith. I'm a planner here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, Sean, if I may just let me read into the record...
Sure.
...the materials the committee is dealing with. We have copy of the set of drawings, a planning rationale from Sean Galbraith, staff reports from community planning, urban forestry, tree protection, urban forestry, twenty-nine form letters in support by owners and occupants, and we have correspondence from Christopher and Janice Longo, four eighty-nine Glen Lake, to consider also. So on this application, we will allow you to go ahead and make a presentation. We are...
To be very brief, front yard parking space in an area that has a majority of front yard parking space is extremely common. I had a great conversation in the hall. We've worked out an agreement. Basically, a previous owner had narrowed the sort of the mutual driveway and the public right-of-way. We're going to restore that to its original full width, and he... We're going to restore that to its original full width, and he, Chris can speak to it, but it's going to work out great. I don't think he's in any, he don't think he's in opposition anymore. And we're proposing, I think, a significant public realm benefits through this by removing a large area of cobblestones that's in the boulevard and re-landscaping it, returning the landscaping, which is, which is in my, my planning report. We're okay with the condition requested by planning for permeable pavers, and the standard forestry conditions are fine.
Thank you very much. Okay, then, could we hear from the other party then, please?
So I actually, sorry, my name is Chris Longo, I'm at 489 Glen Lake. Thank you for your time, I appreciate giving the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I have three conditions, two of them were already met before we even met today, and I do have copies of this, by the way, so you can. I'm not going to read all of this, just to make it brief, because you're already behind schedule. The bottom line on this was, there was a portion of it that was actually the previous owners had put onto the common laneway. I did some measurements to confirm that was the case. Mr. Galbraith has basically said, that's fine, we'll restore it back to where it was, so as long as he does that, I'm happy.
So you understand that committee can't make that, I don't think we can make that part of our, our decision, this is an agreement between you and he, is that correct?
Yeah, well, it's about being on the city property, right? I mean, the common laneway is, is, sorry?
The committee doesn't have the jurisdiction to deal with the municipal boulevard, that's through parking permit enforcement.
So?
So you'd, the, it'll have to be an application through them to do any work in the?
Well, right now, somebody already did work where they shouldn't have, so all I'm saying is I don't want to do that. I actually put forward two options, one is just leave it alone, in other words, don't touch it, because it's in the common laneway, because if they put, one of the propositions was to put a curb, but it's actually not a curb, and so I was worried that that was actually going to narrow the common laneway, which I'm told now isn't going to be the case. But if you're beautifying it and you're removing everything, you might as well just restore it to the full 2.5 width, that's what I'm recommending, or what I'm suggesting.
And that will be permeable pavers?
Well, the, actually, right now, they've got permeable pavers, it only goes about 10 inches into the, into the laneway.
Right.
So if they left it, it is, and they would still be permeable pavers. If they restored it, I suppose one thing they could do is put a line of permeable pavers along the edge, I guess that would work. I don't have an issue with that. The main issue I have is the narrowing of the common laneway, that's it.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Notwithstanding that it's in the boulevard, we've made an agreement that we will restore or maintain a, the appropriate width. Yeah. A good faith neighborly agreement.
Well done.
Okay, then.
I'll move, given that the parties have come to an agreement, I'll, I'll move approval of this application, subject to, are there any conditions?
Forest replies.
Forest, yep, and permeable, and permeable.
Very good, seconded to that motion.
Permeable pavers, people.
Seconded by Mr. Reed. So, motion to approve, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion is carried, your application is approved, thank you. And we move on to application number 24. I'll ask the applicant and the parties in interest to come forward, please. Application number 24. Take your time. Are there parties here in interest to speak to number 24?
Thank you. All.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Miskowski, I'm here as agent to the owner of the property.
Thank you, Jonathan, just a moment, please. Okay, sir, you are here to speak to this, do you care to speak to this application?
I didn't.
You do.
I'm a resident.
Thank you very much, we'll be getting to you in a few minutes. Let me begin by reading into the record the materials with which committee is dealing. A copy of plan, a set of drawings, planning rationale, oh, sorry, pardon me. Okay, set of drawings, email correspondence from the community planning, City of Toronto, and opposition from Jennifer and Jonathan Alton of 112 Evelyn Crescent.
Good afternoon.
Do we need, um, a less than presentation, please?
First of all, there's a small error in the public notice, it is in my favor. The actual requested FSI is not .985, it is .754. So the number itself is correct, being 252.96 square meters, but it's just the actual FSI request that is incorrect.
So from the floor, you are changing variance number two from .985 to .754?
Correct. So that is actually what's reflected in the plans, there is no change. It is not Ms. McLeod's staff's error, it was the zoning examiner's error that I forwarded, and kind of going back and forth, I noticed that the numbers were off. No, no, it's not on a waiver, it was, the actual zoning review was incorrect, and as I was reviewing it, I noticed that that number was way inflated. I do have a revised zoning actual notice that we did request and got today, which I can provide, but the number is .754, for, for the actual FSI that's requested.
Very good.
Yeah, I'll get an email to you.
Yeah.
So the, the proposal is essentially to add and fill in a portion of the third floor of the existing house. There's no actual height being proposed to the main wall, so the variance request for height only relates to the side main walls. The appearance from the front of the dwelling is as per the zoning bylaw. So what I've done here is I've taken the third floor and the yellow portions, that is the only request that is before you today. The rest of the third floor exists as it does today. In terms of how that translates into the elevation, what I've taken here is the yellow at the rear is the portion that's new, as well as the small front dormer portion at the front. What my friend here from Evelyn will speak of is the impact to the south. So how that is mitigated is through this blue area here, okay, is stepped back. So this blue area here translates to this area here. So in terms of what is seen from the rear properties, the actual extension doesn't go all the way back, it is stepped back away from them, mitigating some of that, that impact towards them. In terms of the height again, it is with the exact height of the dwelling today, there is no added height, and it is a side main wall height variance, which is still under appeal through the LPAT, through the zoning bylaw itself, that is not a fully enforced portion of the zoning bylaw yet. Okay, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant?
I have one, the, the cutout on the top floor, which you suggest is a mitigating factor, is that something that you did in response to the opponent's concerns, or you've had that in all along?
To be honest, it was always like that, it had to be like that because of a deck below. The egress for the second floor is off of a deck below it, so it couldn't be filled in, but it is part of a mitigating impact that it is stepped away from them, so they're not looking at that sheer wall. And, and this is somewhat of a unique situation on a block like this, where, I'm not sure if you're aware, the neighborhood, the streets come to weird triangles and move around, so it's a lot of rear yards into side yards, three rear yards into one rear yard, and it kind of, I mean, it's a situation that is common throughout the city, it's just generally not common on such a small scale, where you only have two houses that are going a rear yard to a side yard, or a double rear yard into a side yard. So it's, it's a little odd, but part of that impact is mitigated through the stepping back from the existing second floor deck that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, and I did have one more thing to add, that I did speak of with my friend, was if you were, if you were to approve this application, some of the worries is they're going to put a rooftop deck on top of the third floor. I'd be happy with a condition that would say you couldn't have a rooftop deck going up from the third floor onto the roof. There are zoning provisions for that, but just, just to satisfy my friend that we did speak of.
We'll hear from, hear from the neighbor. Sir, would you come forward, please? And if you would tell us your name and address, please?
It's Peter Stein, 110 Evelyn Crescent.
Thank you very much.
And two issues, one, the variances are, in our view, are quite, and I say my wife and my view is very significant, I mean, it's almost 25% over the maximum, and I'm afraid, John explained, that John, the planner, explained that there was an error.
Are you talking about the height or the FSI?
Well, I'm talking, the height, the height is now, I think, it'll be approximately six feet higher, but it'll be right across the board. So it, it is quite significant, it's 26% over the maximum. So I personally don't think that's minor, but that's just our view.
What is the impact on you?
The impact on you is, well, because of the nature of the, of the neighborhood, there, we live in a 30-house block, there are only two houses that, yeah, there are only two houses in the whole block that run east to west, the rest all line up parallel for, north to south. And so putting a higher, putting a third floor on all the other homes wouldn't have so much impact on the people looking across the back, the backyards. But here, it's like a wall, right, we have a garage, and right over the garage is going to be this wall of house, completely, it blocks half of my backyard, and it blocks the complete backyard of 112. And putting an extra story on with a flat roof, it just, it just creates that walled-in effect.
Thank you.
And, and one thing I just asked John to, John, to explain, the, the area variance is still 100 square meters, that's still quite significant. There may have been an error in the percentages, but there's still 100 square meters over the allowed maximum square footage. It's 252 over, versus 152, something like that.
He's altered that from what, what was circulated publicly, but I wonder which you're referring to, are you referring to the .985 figure or the .754 figure?
But either way, it's still 100 meters, I was a little confused by that explanation, but it's still 100 square meters over the, the maximum.
I don't think it is now, because when it was 100, that was when it was showing as .985, but?
But you know, you said?
No, no, he's just, he made an error on the calculation for the percentage.
Oh, okay, so the .252 remains, it's not incorrect?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, those are really my, my key points, because of the unique orientation of the house, plus the, the significant variances, I, I thought that the, the orientation differences went to the desirability of the change.
Okay.
And impacted one of the conditions for approving the application.
Thank you, just a moment, please. Are there any questions for Mr. Stein? Thanks. Thank you very much.
I also wanted to say that I, in essence, agreed with the letter of objection from 112, just to put that on the record, too.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I do appreciate, thank you very much for explaining it anyway.
Okay, so?
Just a couple of quick things, it is, there is an existing, yeah, there is an existing third floor.
Wall of house effect that he's talking about, can you respond to that?
There is an existing third floor, there is no height being added to the dwelling itself, that third floor is habitable today, we're not taking an attic and turning the attic into habitable space. It is a habitable act, I'm sorry, attic as it is today. The addition on the third floor is essentially for 50 square meters, so the house already is about 50 square meters above the, the FSI that's there today. In terms of the impact of a wall, again, it's a main wall height variance, whether that were to be skirted with a small mansard and a pitch, it's really, the impact is the same, and that impact is really in a backyard going into the, to the side yard of an adjacent dwelling. This is really a common situation that's throughout the city, it's just mitigated here because of the, as we can see from the map here, how it really happens only with these two houses here, but it's a common mid-block situation.
I just have one question, Chairman.
Go ahead.
How far are you from, so called this?
How far would it be?
Yeah, to that, to those houses.
Oh, I mean?
Set back, right?
Well, the garages are right on, are right on the property lines.
That's the view from there.
So I will say this is like 50 feet, I don't know, 30 feet away.
Well, you know, if you take, if you take the garages, that most likely being 20 feet deep, right? So it's at least two garages, you're at least 40, 45 feet away from the rear wall of the dwelling itself.
All right, thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions for?
Comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Stein. We're, we're moving on now to, to the next phase of this. The applicant's had his chance to rebut, and you've had your time, so it's now back into committee unless there are any final questions of the applicant.
This is a, just to confirm, your, the existing roof line is continuing on out the back to support the addition, is that correct?
Yes, we go, we go back to this. So if I zoom in, we can see the dotted lines of the existing, I mean, I can take it off, but here we see the dotted line, these are the dotted lines of the existing, there is no expansion above that, it's completely within the existing height of the roof that's there today. Is it not?
No, make it smaller, so I can see the whole thing.
Oh, so that's the expansion. So closer to my friend is this portion that's in blue, and that is that recess portion for the full length of it.
So that recess, that's over the sliding doors there, you're talking?
Correct, that, you're, right, that sliding door is that back about nine feet from this wall here. So to go back to this portion here, that sliding door is this.
And just, so we've heard of two adjacent neighbors who have raised concerns, did you have discussions with other neighbors?
I did not, no.
Did the owner?
I, from what I understood, the owner did, correct, yes. The, the, the impact of this is very, is very minimal, just because of the location of the dwellings that are around it. The dwelling to the north extends as far as it does now with a similar, albeit not flat roof, but a third floor also that's there.
So that's 11 Fairview?
Correct. That's a, that's a semi.
Oh, this is, 11 is a semi?
Correct.
And you're saying that your, your proposed addition is just going to match up with the depth of that?
We're not proposing any additional depth to the existing dwelling, it's built exactly in line with the, with the dwelling today.
Yeah, we are, are we ready for a motion on this one?
I put forward a motion. I think your diagram with the high-lit section was quite helpful, and I understand your neighbor's concern about the wall of house and loss of sky view, but I think, I think once it's built, it'll actually be not a significant detriment to, to the property of the house, and that the fact that the footprint is staying, I think they're minor variances, and I think it's supportable, so I'd.
That was seconded for motion.
Second that motion, and this is?
Any conditions that we, no? No.
And?
Oh, that's a good point.
We can add a, a condition to say no third floor rooftop deck as well, if that would be of any comfort.
I would put, you can put it as both if you like. The concern was actually on the third floor, which would be the fourth floor.
Yeah.
Just the flat roof of the dwelling should not be used as a rooftop deck.
And, and variance number two has been revised, corrected to read .0754. Very good, so, motion from Mr. Reed?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chang. All those in favor? The application is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would I, can I make a suggestion that we vet the 2:30 and the 3:30 time slot, because we are well past 2:30 as well? And then that will give people the opportunity to be out in the hallway if they have to while we're dealing with?
Very good idea. Okay, so because, because we are running over now, and we apologize to those that are here for subsequent time slots, I'm now going to vet the applications that were due to be heard at 2:30, no. at 2:30, no, 2:30 and 3:30. Then after we've done that, we'll take about a 10-minute recess. I'm going to vet these now for the following reasons. We're going to find out if particular applications are uncontested, or whether there are parties here who wish to be heard to speak in opposition to those, those applications. So when I read out the application number and the address, if you're the applicant, please identify yourself, and then I'll ask if there are people in interest here. If you're here to speak to that, let me know so we can cite that application as a contested application. All right then, let's move on, starting at application number 31, 31 Ridge Drive. Applicant, thank you. Persons in interest. Seeing none, I move to application 32, 456 Jones. Applicant, thank you. Persons in interest. Number 33, 20, sorry, 202 Roxborough. Thank you. Person in interest. 34480 Donlands. Thank you. People in interest. 3564 Roxborough, Street West. And also, I'm going to include these two because they're parts of the same property or the same dwelling structure, 3666 Roxborough Street. Applicant, are there people here to speak to either 35 or 36? Are you here to speak to that application?
Not... Okay.
You're the applicant, okay.
No opposition.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to either 65, 64, or 66 Roxborough? No. 37, 155 Oak Park Avenue. Persons in interest. 38, 144 Galley Avenue. Applicant, thank you. 39, 12 Grimthorpe Road.
Is there interest on Galley?
I'm sorry, was there interest on Galley? Anyone to speak to Galley, sorry. No, there's not, okay. 12 Grimthorpe, thank you. Persons in interest. There is someone on that one on... I'm sorry, so that is 12 Grimthorpe. So we're holding down number 39, 12 Grimthorpe until the end of that segment. And finally, in that segment, number 40, 277 Cedarville, thank you applicant. Persons in interest? None. I shall now move on to the next segment, 330 segment. Number 41, 19 Binns Carth. Applicant, please. Thank you. Persons in interest to speak to that? Is there anyone? No. 42, 2299 Dundas West. Applicant, please. Thank you. Okay, good. Persons in interest? Yes, there are. So 42, 2299 Dundas Street West is held down. 43A, 43B, 395 Arlington Avenue. Applicant, thank you. Persons in interest on that one? Number 44, 44A and B, 393 Arlington. Again, anyone interested on that one? No. 45A, B, and C, 285 Glebe Mount Ave. Applicant, thank you. Persons in interest? Very good. And finally, application 46A, B, and C, 88 East Lynn. Here's the applicant. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to that application? Yes, there are people on that one. So let me recap these two segments. The following applications have been held down till the end of their segment. So number first, on the first, the 230 segment, number 39, 12 Grimthorpe. That will be heard after we hear of the uncontested application, number 40. Then we'll move officially into the 330 time slot. On that slot, applications 42 and 46A, B, and C are held down until the end of that slot, until we've heard all the uncontested applications. So thank you very much. On those three that are being held down, I invite the applicants to meet with the parties here in interest, to discuss the issues, perhaps resolve them during the next 10 minutes or so, and committee will take a break until 5...
Just so you don't feel forgotten, people on the 130 slot, there are two holes to go there. We know that you're there. We'll begin with you right after our break, which will finish about 2 minutes to 4. So committee's now in recess for 10 minutes.
Do you think we were going to need a coffee?
I didn't order them.
Getting, here is the time.
It's okay, I'm just kidding. I was just going to go down and get a coffee.
Yeah, I'm going to get a coffee.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. I'm going to get a coffee, too.
Is the applicant for 229 Dundas here?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Okay.
So that's why I was...
So that's why I was...
I mean, it's up to them to...
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 I really don't. I don't need anything more.
You might need some cookies.
Uh, no, I, you know, no, 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 no. No, you're being very kind.
I can eat all the cookies I like. I'm lucky that way.
Well, there you go.
It's metabolism thing.
Should bottle that and sell it. Anita, is it...
The first thing, we don't need our binders.
I'm just saying, no reason to keep...
I'm going to hang on to mine till I have a...
Technology.
I'm going to keep it until...
This was my concern.
So maybe just, maybe we should, just as a safeguard, I'll keep...
I'm going to hang on to mine.
About the binders? What did you say?
Oh, could keep them because you always have a transitional period. Don't trust your...
No, Anita's not giving a paper for the next meeting.
I understand, but it's still material, no? Maybe not two binders, maybe one.
My mind is...
Just one, yeah. Yeah. I would say just one, one is enough.
So come back now.
Would the applicant come forward? And those who are here to speak in interest on this application, come forward also, please, and just have a seat along this side. And just as we're getting ready, I shall let you know the materials that committee has before it. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Email correspondence from Community Planning at City Planning Toronto, and a staff report from the Director of Community Planning, Toronto in East York. Okay, sir, would you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Savan Miokovic, the designer and agent on behalf of the homeowners for 25 Glen Lake Avenue.
Thank you. And I'll ask you, if you would, to make your presentation.
Sure.
Just one moment, please. So let me ask you, the neighbors that are here, do you both wish to speak or just one of you? Just one of us, please, sir. That's very good, okay.
It might be worthwhile to note here that the objections had nothing to do with the zoning proposal, but the zoning variances, but it was more in relation to a vine on their house and the measures we would take to protect it. So we've actually come to a mutual neighborly agreement, if that's of any use for you guys to expedite your review process here.
We'll hear from them, the towns that they wish to speak, so we shall hear from them also. And you now have five minutes.
Okay, great. So we've proposed, proposing a two-story rear addition as well as a third-story roof addition that'll house some interior space. And we've triggered a few variances I'd like to speak to. Let's first talk of the top-of-roof building height proposed. So the maximum is 10 meters, whereas the proposed is 10.14 meters. Just like to point it to the committee, that's the height taken to the skylight, so it's more of a technical variance. The actual top-of-roof height is 9.96 meters, so, you know, we are compliant in that respect. Now, the other strange one is the top-of-main-wall height. You'll notice there that the soffit height is actually at well under 7.5 meters. But what's happened here is because the third story will have interior area, the zoning examiner has counted the roof as a wall. But obviously, that's not the case. It is a roof and not a wall, so it's also a technical variance. And the proposed top-of-main-wall height is well below the 7.5-meter maximum. So I'm going to pull up the site plan quickly.
I'm not sure we need to go through all this. Yeah, I think we're actually at a stage where we can probably hear from the neighbors with their, the concerns that you were giving us a general sense of.
Sure, that sounds great.
Good of that, then, next. Please, come to the microphone. Come on up to the podium, if you would, Trevor.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Sorry, Trevor. The same one, I beg your pardon.
Hi, I'm Trevor from Trevor Walker, 27 Glen Lake, adjoining neighbor for the east side.
Thank you.
We've come to a mutual agreement in respects to our issues were not in so much in conjunction with the variances, more in the protection of greenery that is on our home, which has a root ball that happens to be on our neighbor's property. The renovation that is proposed would possibly compromise... The renovation that would, is proposed would possibly compromise the, uh, as you can see on the photo, the plant that covers our entire home. Um, but we've come to a, a mutual agreement in respects to its care, preservation and possible demise. Uh, after the renovations are done, we can handle ourselves, uh, as neighbors and, um, take it from that. We have, we have, we had, uh, water issues that were, uh, also to be addressed, um, in respects to water damage that we had in our home from, uh, from leakage and, and coverage, but we will take that on. I, I can't say it's a what-if, so we will take that on if that, uh, becomes an issue in the future. But as it stands right now, I think we are all quite satisfied on where we're landing, um, with the proposal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applicant, please.
I just wanted to point out, I do have nine letters of signatures up to support to submit to the committee as well.
Very good. All right, then. You have nine letters that haven't been submitted already?
Uh, they have.
They should be submitted to staff, please. Okay.
That's okay. So that diagram there on the big screen, uh, shows you the immediate proximity of those signatures of support.
Very good.
I don't have any questions.
Well, let's, I think we may be ready to carry on to a motion?
Except that's one comment from the planning, uh, that the application, uh, if we approve to tie to the plans submitted October 21st.
Yeah, and in general, I'm fine with that, and I totally understand the reason for it. But sometimes I've noticed when we apply for a building permit and let's say a, a window slightly shifts, it becomes an issue, so I wouldn't mind qualifying that a little.
Excuse, excuse me, uh, do you need a qualification on that? Were you, were you about to make a motion?
No, he, 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 no.
So I just wanted to speak back to that. So I was saying, if we could qualify it that it's tied to site plan and the general massing of the building proposed as per the elevations. So I would just suggest, uh, we, we tie the decision to the site plan, uh, submitted along with the general building massing, uh, presented on the elevations.
Do you, is there a specific reason, you know, why Community Planning would be asked that this be tied to those drawings?
For su- for sure, because the, the top of main wall height, like I mentioned previously, is, is a roof. So they want to make sure a previous applicant doesn't use these, uh, variances granted improperly as like a flat roof or something.
Through you, Mr. Chair, in their report, they refer to the, um, rear wall height and, uh, the sloped roof with dormers.
Right, so that's the shell, the general massing, yeah, of the building.
Too big, but, okay.
Good progress.
Yeah. So, uh, I like to move approval with the conditions that the, uh, general massing and the, uh, the top of the main wall will tie to the, uh, drawing submitted October 21st to 2019.
Okay, great. Thank you. Second for that motion? Second, Mr. Reed. So, um, motion to approve with those recommendations by Ms. Chang, second by Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Application is approved.
All right, thank you.
Very good, and we move on to number 38, Gloucester Grove, application number 27. Are there people here that are in, uh, in interest? Please come on up, please, and have these chairs. And I'll just ask those people, do you both care to speak or just one of you? You'll both be speaking? Um, so just bear in mind that, you know, you don't need to cover the same items, as long as you're covering different, different subject matter, that's fine. Good afternoon. Just before we begin on this application, I'll let you know the materials that committee has. Um, we are dealing with a set of drawings, plus we have three form letters signed by the arguments of 37, 39, and 41 Gloucester. And that was, that's, uh, support correspondence and correspondence in opposition from 40 Gloucester. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sean Galbraith. I'm planner here on behalf of the applicant. I'll be very brief. Uh, two of the variances, the driveway and the, um, uh, eaves are existing conditions, and the proposed addition is a one-story rear addition. Um, the, the FSI is the smallest FSI that has been requested in the area and is, I think, entirely appropriate.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, then, I invite the, uh, those in opposition to come forward to the microphone, the same microphone as the applicant spoke from.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, committee. My name is Charna Gordon, and I live at 36 Gloucester Grove. And, um, with all due respect to my, my neighbor, um, my experiences with regards to encroachment on my property in the past have been negative. And I'm, that, for you, wouldn't necessarily have any bearing today, but for me, past behavior is predictive of future behavior. So the, the biggest issue is, um, that there's no, there's not a significant setback, and, um, I really feel that during the excavation period, it's going to be a real mess, and I don't really feel, um, convinced that that would be handled very well. It hasn't been handled very well in the past. Um, so the setback, the, um, with regards to the eaves, um, that's going to, that's going to jut into the existing, my existing driveway. And although it's fairly high, I'm, I may have a situation where I need to bring things down the driveway, and that's going to block it.
That's variance number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should be referring them by number. Um, but, um...
We have three variances. One is the driveway width, one is, is the roof eaves, which is number three.
Yeah.
And the last one is forest space index. So in terms of the first one you mentioned, though, those would be construction issues, which city construction would have to deal with.
So setback is whose?
Well, the roof eaves, the roof eaves is, is ours to deal with. We have, we have a, a minor variance in front of us. But the committee is just dealing with these three minor variances, that's all we have authority to do.
And the setback is not part of that?
The setback, obviously, that's proposed for the main walls hasn't, hasn't triggered a variance. But if there are construction issues around the construction, then you would, you would go to the city construction people to voice your concerns. But we can't, we're not authorized or, you know, we don't have the authority to deal with those issues.
The other thing is...
You mentioned the roof eaves, though, that's why I want to...
Yeah, yeah.
Drill down on here, because that, that is ours.
Okay.
So you mentioned that the roof eave location is proposing 1.25 meters from the east side of the lot. Are you on the east side?
Yes.
You are the east side?
Yeah.
So does that, does that 1.25 constitute a hardship for you?
Yes.
Please explain the impact of that.
Because in order for me to bring something large down my driveway, it's going to block it.
Something large in the sense of, uh...
A tiny house that I was hoping to build, which, which, what it is, is it's a mob, it's like a mobile home. And I won't be able to, if I, if I do build it, I won't be able to bring it down the driveway. The driveway, the driveway is already narrow.
Okay.
So that's a concern. The other thing is, it's stated on the plan, and again, forgive me if it's not your area of, of concern, is that, that an existing covered porch, and I've brought a picture because I've lived there more than 19 years, and I've never seen any evidence of a porch or certainly not anything covering it, whether it's underneath the landscaping, I don't know. I can bring it...
This is on the neighboring property?
Pardon?
This porch that you're referring to is on the neighboring property?
Yeah, yes, on the, on the, that's the, the porch is, is proposed to be rebuilt, but I don't see any evidence of a porch, so...
How can it be rebuilt if it doesn't exist, you're saying? Is that what you mean?
That's, that's what it looks like. I brought a picture.
Could you, do you want to put it up on the overhead?
What are we looking at?
So, okay, so it's really the, the wording, reconstructing the front porch is your, is your, okay, fine.
Well, it's in the diagram.
Well, we'll ask the applicant to explain what it's meant by that, okay. Fine. Okay, and is your, is the other party going to speak also?
Yeah.
Let's proceed then to the second party.
My name is Andrew Albogan, I live at 40 Gloucester Grove.
Yes.
And, um, so I'm, I'm going to talk about the variances, number one, the eaves.
Yes.
There's a setback on the house, and I don't understand how she's going to, uh, put eaves troughs on the east side of the house with only four inches, with zero setback. So that's the variance she's applying, applying for, and I believe that's what Charna is talking about.
This is, yes, the roof eaves, you know, that's the proposal. What would, what would the impact of that be?
Well, the impact is that, you know, the, the applicant wants to take down fences, wants to disturb and dig on her property, and if she provided a setback, then she could, it would be, you know, there would be no disruption to her property on, on that side. Um, I, I also have some issues with the variance on the driveway because now the applicant decided she wants to put an overhang on the right-of-way. There's also air, an air conditioner that hangs above, uh, I, I don't know how, if the city approves that, if that's an approvable item. I know it's not part of the variances, but because you're narrowing the driveway and she wants to add air handlers and/or, uh, side canopies, then, you know, she, it, it makes a, it impacts us on the right-of-way if we decide to do any maintenance or any build. Also, the architectural landscape of the front of the house that she wants to now change, all of the houses are in line, and if you look down the street, there's nothing that jets out. All of a sudden, now she wants to put, um, this new, uh, overhang on the front of the house, which, again, I'm not sure if this is...
Which variance is that?
Pardon?
Are you referring to one of the variances?
I, I'm not sure if it's a variance, it's on the application, uh, that she has submitted to committee, and I'm not sure if it's a variance or not, again, I'm not an architect or builder.
Yeah, because...
Okay.
Okay. All right, then, thank you very much. We'll ask the applicant to come back and rebut some of the issues that were raised where, um, possible encroachments. Um, if you could clarify this issue of the porch, what is this porch that is going to be reconstructed?
Uh, it's...
And the air conditioning, uh, in the driveway?
So the, the front porch is, it's the front concrete porch, it's being reconstructed and a new, um, I'll show you. So the reconstructed part is that part, and then there's a new awning architectural feature above it. No variance is triggered by it. Um, as to the, um, the eaves, um, there's roughly 10 feet between grade and the bottom of the eaves. I think that's plenty, and it's on our property. So if there was movement of a tiny house structure into the rear of her, her yard, presumably she would have to do it on her own property anyway. Um, so we're not encroaching onto her land, we're just getting closer to our common property line. Um, as to the, uh, canopy above our own driveway, again, no variance is triggered by it. The, the, uh, driveway width, um, is essentially an existing condition, and it pertains to the, the rear of the property where the one-story addition is proposed. It's in line with the existing width of the driveway. It's already an existing condition.
Existing condition, thank you.
Yes.
Questions for the applicant?
Um, Mr. Galbraith, I'm just looking at the site plan here, so I just want to confirm. It looks like the, you don't have it in front of you, the dotted line, uh, outside of the actual addition, is that the eve overhang?
Which dotted line are you referring to?
I'm on, uh, A0.1.
I have the site plan up there.
Yeah, that's it.
Which dotted line are you referring to?
Uh, the one that I have has a dotted line around the addition. I can't, yeah, it doesn't have it on that one, I don't think.
If I may approach...
Derek, yeah, come on over. It's this one here. It's this one, this one here, and there's a dotted line around...
Oh, yes.
So is that the...
Correct.
...the line of the extent of the eve?
Correct.
Okay, and that, from this rendering, looks like that's...
There's a...
On your property, that doesn't go over the property line.
Twelve and a half centimeters from the property.
Right.
Yeah, within our property.
Sorry. Sure, I'm sorry.
And would also be the existing condition of the existing house.
Right. Okay, then. Are there any further questions of the applicant, or can we move to a motion?
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, just one minor question. What's the existing, um, FSI of the house?
Approximately 0.44.
Okay.
Again, the, what's proposed is the smallest in the area.
Yeah. I like to move for approval because, um, because that, actually, the number three variance is talking about not encroachment, it's only just protecting towards the lock line. So they are talking about seven inches in 10, at 10 feet high. So I, I, I consider that minor, and actually, all the variances are considered minor, I like to move for...
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Clay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Application is approved. Thank you. And committee moves on to the first application of our 2:30 time slot, which is 31, 31 Ridge Drive. Would that applicant come forward, please?
Good afternoon.
Just a moment, please, and, on this application, we have before us, uh, a set of drawings, copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, covering letter from Felix Leicher, the agent, which includes comparison chart, aerial view, 15 photographs, five photographs of the property, and rear view. Um, there's also a staff report from Urban Forestry Natural, Ravine and Natural Features, and there are, is by way of support, correspondence, a forest signature petition in support. Now, I'll just ask committee members on this application, 31 Ridge Drive, do committee members wish a presentation, or could we go to questions?
No presentation.
Let's go straight to questions, then, please.
Didn't say my name here. Felix Leicher, I'm the agent for the owner, and I have one more signature and support from the neighbor to the west.
Okay. So this is just carrying on the existing height of the existing building? Is that correct?
We're going 0.37 meters higher than the existing building, but the intent is to keep the view from the street, the roof remains, and then gets carried on to the backyard. The footprint of the building remains the same as existing.
Right. I, no problems with this one, sure? So if no one else does, I'll, uh, I'll, uh, I don't think there's any conditions on this one, is there? Forestry. Forestry has a condition? You're aware of the forestry condition?
Yes.
Uh, then I'll move, uh, approval of this application, subject to the forestry condition. Is there ravine condition?
Yeah. Natural feature protection, uh...
Number one.
Yeah.
Ravine and natural protection, number one condition.
Okay.
Okay. Second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reed. All those in favor? The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 32, which is 456 Jones Avenue.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Danielle Bader, I'm the homeowner.
Thank you very much. So on this application, committee has before it, uh, a set of drawings, decision number A084917. So on this application, committee has before it a set of drawings, decision number A 084917TEY, which affects the property, correspondence from you, the applicant, Danielle Bader, outlining a list of similar FSI approvals in the surrounding neighborhood, and a staff report from the manager of permits and parking enforcement, transportation services, and two form letters in support. Does committee wish a presentation on this application? Any questions of the applicant? I'll just ask you, does the footprint of the house change at all? It's the same, okay.
A small extension on the third floor. There already is a third floor.
And what is the current FSI? You're asking for .8, but the currently it's...
You know what? That's a very good question. I don't have that information. We were approved two years ago for an extension on the rear of the house, and it's already completed, and it's done. So if there were FSI variances that we were asking two years ago, then they were all...
That was approved at 7.4.
Well, 7.4, yeah. So you're just increasing on six.
From that one.
Yeah. So we're asking for a variance of .2.
I'd like to move a motion.
Yes, please.
I think this is all really minor and makes sense. So I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Reed. Second?
I would second that.
Seconded by Ms. Chang. All those in favor? Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Number 33, 202 Roxborough. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
State your name and address, please.
Okay. My name's Nadine Rajani, and I'm representing our clients at 202 Roxborough Drive.
Thank you very much. On this application, committee has before it copy plans, survey site plans, floor plans, decision number A 67000TO affecting the subject property, and email correspondence from Ravina Natural Protection, from TRCA, and from Heritage Preservation Services City Planning. Plus, there's a staff report from the supervisor of ravine and natural feature protection. All right. And that report, I believe, is to the... It's my minor impact, yes. So Urban Forestry has a condition also, which is their condition... Maybe not.
I don't see it.
No, they don't. No, I'm wrong. They do not have a condition. Questions, or do we move straight to a motion?
I just have a... Why do you need a variance for a bay window?
Sorry?
Why do you need a variance for a bay window?
It's because there's an increase in GFA, so it increases the FSI very infinitesimally.
I was going to say, just because there's a bump out for the bay?
There is an existing bay, which has angled sidewalls. We're essentially rebuilding the bays and just squaring it off. And so that increases the GFA.
Oh, so it's not cantilevered out. It actually goes right down into the...
There'd be a proper foundation built for it, yeah.
Right, because it extends out.
Yeah.
This seems quite minor and technical in nature. I'll move approval of that. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Second to that? Mr. Reed, seconds. Mr. Clay's motion. All those in favor? Application is approved. Thank you. Number 34, 480 Donlands. Applicant, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Would you state your name and address, please?
Glenn Rubenoff. What is it? 697 Mount Pleasant Road.
Thank you very much. On this application, committee is looking at a set of drawings, plus a staff report from the manager, permits and enforcement, transportation services. We have in opposition one correspondence from George Calcunis at 449 Donlands. Please carry on. We'll just find out whether committee requests a presentation.
There is a letter of support from the immediate neighbor as well.
There is?
In the file.
Okay, thank you. We don't have that, just for your information.
Okay. I have it from the... From 476, the immediate neighbor next door.
476, okay. Oh, the immediate neighbor next door?
Yeah.
In support?
Yes, in support. The one who wrote the letter is not... It's across the road and down a bit.
Okay. Okay. Just one variance. Members, do we need a presentation? Or are there any questions, or can we move to a motion?
Have you seen the letter from the other neighbor? I mean, have you got any comments on that?
Well, it's...
Then he's some distance from where this is?
Some distance. The variance he's talking about are not variances per se. He's talking about the roof. We don't have a variance for the roof. We don't have side yard. We don't have length. It's simply a one variance for a lot coverage. And it's a corner irregular lot. I feel it's a minor.
Seems like a fairly modest increase in coverage as well.
There's only one note from transportation requesting...
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like, in the case, I'd like to move a motion for approval with the conditions that are the recommendations by transportation to, as is written here.
Very good.
I want to read it. You have this slide?
Second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
And we are on to application 64. 64 and 66 need to be looked at sort of together, but... They are different owners and different applications, but just so committee knows that they do impact each other. And so we'll ask applicant for number 64, Roxborough, to come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Hassan Vitko from Hassan Vitko Architect, Inc. I'm currently located at 94 Shasbury Avenue.
Thank you.
As you stated earlier, it's a semi, the neighbor to the west, is doing something very similar.
Exactly. Just a moment, please. On this one, committee simply has before it a set of plans and drawings, plus a staff report from Urban Forestry Tree Protection and Plan Review. Vivek, a brief presentation on this one? Or do we need it?
I don't think you need a presentation, but I just have a quick question. I wonder if you can... We're going to be hearing from 66, I guess, in a minute.
Yes.
Can you just speak to how the two are working together? Or are they working together? Are they totally independent? Or is it planned to be done in concert with each other?
We're doing it in concert with each other. We actually met last spring, and we planned this together.
Okay.
So the construction to the two sides of the semi will happen simultaneously?
The third-floor addition will take place simultaneously. It's almost required by the nature of the construction. With respect to the re-addition, we'll be doing that also simultaneously. We on at 64 side, we have done the foundations under permit, with proper permits. And we actually are together, supporting each other, and proceeding together from here on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'd move a motion. These all seem quite minor, and I'm pleased to hear, see neighbors working together in concert on a project instead of the opposite. So move to approve, please.
Motion to approve by Mr. Reed. Sorry?
It's forestry.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Subject to Urban Forestry is condition number two.
Seconded by Ms. Chang. So motion on the floor to approve with forestry to apply. All those in favor?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Thank you, committee.
And we move on to application 36. Next door, 66 Roxborough.
You never know. We may not approve you.
Now, on this application, good afternoon.
Hi.
Read out some of the materials we're looking at, then I'll ask you to give your name and address, please.
Sure. Stuart Watson, Drawing Room Architect, and it's for 66 Roxborough.
Okay, thank you. And committee is looking at the following materials: a set of plans, correspondence from Arthur Hyung, the agent, and a covering letter from Stuart Watson, the agent, and 10 form letters in support, signed by various owners and occupants on Roxborough, McPherson, plus another letter from 62 Roxborough. Okay. Are there any questions for this applicant of the house next door?
I assume you're... Obviously, you share your colleague's view that this is being done together, and it's all...
Yes.
Yeah, of course. Great.
In that case, we can move to a motion?
I'll move a motion to approve. Is there conditions? There's no conditions? There's none on this one?
No, it doesn't have forestry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion to... Motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed.
We haven't voted yet, just to be clear.
All those in favor? Okay. Approved. And we move to number 37, 155 Oak Park Ave. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Lee, and I'm the homeowner.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
On this application, committee has before it copy of plan of survey site, plan floor plans, elevations, six photographs of existing properties in the neighborhood, correspondence from Amy Lee, the applicant, a staff report from Community Planning, Toronto and East York, a staff report from Tree Protection and Plan Review, Urban Forestry. We have both opposition and support correspondence, 16 form letters in support, and in opposition, one letter in opposition from Ian Jamison and Anita Seervelt from 18 Orley Ave. Okay, so on this application, I think we can invite members to pose their questions to the applicant.
I don't have any questions. There's only one comment from the planning that if we move for approval, proposals should tie to...
Yes. Yes.
So any questions?
I wouldn't mind just asking. So you've seen the letter in opposition?
I did not. I looked online. Just I thought I looked yesterday, and I didn't see any letter in opposition, but...
Do you know where 18 Orley Avenue is?
Orley Avenue is... So we're on Oak Park, Orley's south of us, and 18 is fairly far down. Like 2 Orley is kind of kitty corner to our backyard. So 18 would be...
It's about 10 houses down.
Yeah.
It's far down the block.
Okay. So they wouldn't necessarily be impacted directly?
No.
By your application?
No, we're not close to their house.
And you've talked to your immediate neighbors and...
We have. We have 16 letters from support, including on our next-door neighbors on both sides.
Good. So the street is predominantly bungalows and one and a half stories. And your proposal is a three-story. Do you see that impact? How can that impact be minor when it's going to be the only three-story on a street of one and a half stories and one stories?
It's actually... There are other three-story houses on our street as well. In the block just south of us, there are two three-story houses. And there are houses certainly higher. And I know Sharon at the planning department, Ms. Hong, mentioned that there are houses that are 10 meters on our street, and our proposal is for 9.44 meters.
Okay. When you say three stories, the third story is embedded within a slope roof line, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it's not the entire...
No.
Third story.
It's a two and a half story.
Yeah, that's what I would call it.
Very good. Ready for a motion?
So I still move... I'd like to move a motion for approval with, based on the revised agenda?
Yes.
And also the... Yeah. And the also should tie to the drawing submitted November 14, 2019. And that's forestry, 123 conditions. Number one.
Very good. Thank you for that. Second to that motion is Mr. Reed. All those in favor? The application is approved. Application number 38 is next. 144 Galley. Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Mike DiOliera. I'm here from Replacement Design, representing 144 Galley Avenue.
Thank you very much. On this application, committee has before it copy of plan of survey site, plans, floor plans, staff reports from Community Planning, staff report from Tree Protection and Planning Review, Urban Forestry, and letters of support, seven of them in fact, in total, from various occupants of Galley Avenue. Are there any questions of the applicant, committee members? Can we go to a motion?
What's a dining pavilion?
Essentially like a pergola. It's another covered space where our clients...
It's enclosed or just covered?
It'll be covered. It's not fully...
It's open. It's like a gazebo.
Yeah.
So seasonal use, then?
Yes.
You want to sit in the cold?
All right. If there are no further questions, let's move to a motion.
Yes, is it... Am I right that planning department recommends opaque screening on the second and the third story balcony?
Yes, and the owners are okay with that.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes, so I'd like to move a motion for approval with the condition, Urban Forestry Condition Number Two, and also to install opaque screen on the second floor balcony in the north...
Very good.
That's variable.
Second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Your application is approved.
Right. Thank you very much.
And we move on now to application 40, 277 Cedar Vale.
Hi, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Oliver Roy, and I'm an architect in behalf of... I'm here, behalf of the owner. We don't touch anything. We don't touch the building height, any setbacks, and any landscaping. And just the building was used for three units for more than 15 years, more than 50 years. And recently, my client received a letter from the city of Toronto and mentioned that this is illegal or something like that. But he has some documentation that shows that the building at that time used... But he has some documentation that shows that the building, at that time, used our issue or something, it was a kind of reference that used for three units. Also, the other two units, two building and two eighty-three and two seventy-nine Cedar Vale has their own three units legally. So, we are here for your favor, an approval of application.
There is on this application, in fact, nothing before committee except for the, the set of plans, the copy of survey site, plan, floor plans, and elevations, that's all we have before us, plus the notice. So, how, how many secondary suites are there act, are we?
Uh, there's two, they used, used to for two, one the main floor, one the basement, one the second floor, and as my client said, this is for fifty years.
Fifty years?
Kind of, yeah, nineteen fifty, after nineteen fifties.
So, just one clear, so you've, you've, you're, I mean, what are you asking us for? Approval of an addition?
Uh, we don't have any addition.
You're not doing, so you're, this is just normalizing the existing?
That's it.
So, you're not planning any new construction, this is just taking a triplex and basically making it legal?
That's it, but we just reinforce some drywalls to five-eight type X for the fire resistance rating or something like that.
Right, code, right.
But we don't touch anything on the, the, around the building, or any setbacks, anything, just any landscaping, everything is the same.
Okay, besides, yeah. Yeah. A legal triplex.
What are the, yeah, so that's what I wanted to get, there are two units, I want to ensure that they're both of a reasonable size, so tell me the, the square meterage of each unit separately, please.
Um, each unit separately, I can tell you here from the drawing. Uh, unit number one has eight by four, thirty, yes, or, yes, eight by five, is a fourteen square meter, existent basement.
That's the basement?
Including, including the furnace, air, furnace room, laundry room, this is, the both is in common for a whole building. And the same, the, uh, unit number two, the main floor is the same dimension, because we take a dimension from the outside, and, including the stairs for going to the upstairs, and the stairs go downstairs from the back. And unit number three is the same dimension for the, for the third one. Exactly this happened to two eighty-three and two seventy-nine Cedar Vale, they approved by, from one unit to three units, in a couple, one is a year ago, and the other one is a couple months ago, and this is the third one for two seventy-seven Cedar Vale.
All the units are, they're, all the units are of, of good size, and none of them are particularly strange or small sized.
Basement floor looks pretty tiny.
Number third is in the three floor, in the third floor is, is the biggest number, number.
But you've got a, there's a residence in the basement, is there?
Uh, resident in the basement, unit number one, there, the one, the kitchen, and a living room, and one bedroom on the back, and washroom, and the furnace, and the laundry is a common with the other.
Yeah, I'm just looking, you've got a lot of utilities down there, and what looks like basically a one-room.
Yeah, one room and one.
Bachelor sort of thing.
No, 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 it's not a bachelor, it's a one-bedroom.
A one-bedroom?
Yeah.
Oh, there's a wall there. There's a wall right there?
There's an narrow bedroom, eh?
No, it's not this, this is not our building. I got the wrong file?
What's this? Yeah, this is, I, that's why I don't know what you.
Sorry.
This is, this is the building.
Yes.
It's the basement.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Okay then, any further questions of the applicant, or can we move to a motion?
Move to approve?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Reed to approve, second to that by Ms. Cheng. All those in favor?
Thank you very much, I appreciate, thank you, have a good one.
Application is approved. And now we come to the, the one element, or the one item on this segment that was contested, that is, application number thirty-nine, twelve Grimthorpe Road, applicant, please, and persons that are here to speak in opposition, would they please come to this side bench of the horseshoe, please? Good afternoon, may I ask your name and address?
Good afternoon, my name is Nafi Sazange Obadi, address is thirty Apple Orchard Path Thornhill.
Thank you. And may I ask, will you, do you intend to speak this afternoon, would you like to speak? You, you have an opportunity to speak if you wish, following the applicant's presentation. You'll, okay, very good. And on this particular application, the committee is looking at a set of plans, plus staff report from Tree Protection and Plan Review, Urban Forestry, and correspondence from one person, Barb Wentworth. That's yourself, thank you, Barbara, okay, at ten Grimthorpe, so you are next door, is that correct? Very good, okay. Please carry on with your presentation.
Yes, and first of all, we do have letter of support from eight of our neighbors, do you mind if I hand that in? Or you can, or I can put it there. So, the application before you is pretty much similar to the previous application, this has an existing lawful non-conforming condition, it was an existing triplex for more than twenty-five years with three units, and the owner decided to do a rear addition for main and second story only, which their new proposal for main and second story complies with the bylaw, so everything, including height, length, GFA, and the coverage is within the bylaw, but since they're doing this addition, the whole building became the subject of the new bylaw, which only permits two units, and now, we're here just to legalize the third unit that has been there for more than twenty-five years. There is also a three-car parking at the rear, so we don't have any parking issues, the third unit is not going to be enlarged, it's going to stay the same size, there's not going to be any new tenants there, like, the three tenants that there used to be, they're going to stay, and we have spoken to staff that's in support of the application, and we have a letter of support from eight, nine of our neighbors, so, we just believe the, this one variance is minor in nature, and I'm going to ask for the approval of the committee.
Thank you very much. So, the objective of your application is to, to do what?
To.
Is to alter the existing three-story by adding a rear two-story, is there a, an objective?
Asking for three units instead of two.
Three units instead of two.
That was existing for more than thirty years.
Okay. Okay, wait a sec, so is, is it an existing triplex?
Yes.
Not legal though.
But not legal.
Sorry, what's that?
Basically, this is a request, this application could also be looked at as an application to legalize, is that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so that's the objective here's.
There's an addition involved. Yeah. But addition doesn't require variance.
But the addition that's not.
Right.
So, okay. Very good. Do you have any, anything more to add to your, okay then, I'll ask the, I'll ask the neighbor to come forward, please, for her, her presentation.
Hi, my name's Barb Wentworth and I live at ten Grimthorpe Road, and this extension is twenty feet on the back, so it's basically cut off all the, the sightlines and the view from every window on the east side of my house, but that's not why I'm here today. I'm concerned about the traffic in the driveway, and I'm concerned about water flow. One of the problems that I have is that the property line is the brick wall of my house, right, that, there's just not, not much room there, and, and so, with the twenty-feet extension, there's way less room for cars to maneuver back there, and, and also, in the driveway, the, the driveway has been paved so that my back basement window is three to four inches below grade level, which is terrible with climate change and the type of storms we're going to get, and with the twenty-foot extension, I have no idea whether the water flow on the driveway will act the way it did before the twenty-foot extension was on, and so, I have no problem with a third-floor apartment, but I'm wondering if there's any way that we can limit how many cars are allowed to be in the back, and if there's anything that can be done to direct flooding or snow melt away from the side of my house, because it's not my property, I can't do anything about it.
Trying to picture your driveway and, and your window, four inches below grade and so on, do you have a, does anything come to you by way of, a way that that could be mitigated or constructed in such a way as to steer water away from your window?
I have no idea what the fix would be, I was upset when the, the neighbors paved the driveway and left it the way it was, because I would have thought that they would, the, whoever was doing the driver would have either dug it down further and put it in, or ameliorated it somehow, but the problem is, is that I've already had a flood in there, I put in interior weeping tiles to collect any water that came in through the windows or the side of the house and ran down the, the concrete and came under, and, so I've done what I can, but I am really concerned with the types of storms we're getting and the types of water.
Now, you did weeping tiles, but you didn't do it on that side of the house, because that's, that's not your property, is that what you said?
It was interior weeping tiles, so I dug up my basement and put it in, so that if it comes in the house, it goes, and goes into the weeping tiles, but that's not helpful in a really bad storm, or if something plugs up, you know, it's, and because the extension goes so far back, I have no idea if the, like, the driveways are all paved, so the water's supposed to go down the middle of the channel, right, but I have no idea whether with the twenty-foot back, whether the water will go the same way as it did before the twenty-foot extension was put on the house. So, I, I'm kind of stuck, and I don't know what to do.
Thank you very much, thanks for your presentation, we'll just look into this. May I ask, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, what a, is this a drainage plan part of building permit? For the subject property?
Um, applicant, there is lot grading plans required in, I believe in most circumstances, but maybe not every, usually with a new house, and then as far as water drainage, they're supposed to ensure that water drains onto their property and away from other properties, but the city won't be looking at the impact on the abutting properties per se, they're just looking at the permit property.
Right.
But there are requirements for the applicant to ensure that during construction, all these things.
The building, in the building permit?
Yeah.
Process, okay. So, the concern voiced by your neighbor, or by the neighboring person, is that, is one about water flow particularly?
Yes.
Do you have any, any obvious response to that in terms of things?
Um, we definitely make sure that drainage won't go to her property, that's, we can ensure during the construction, the driveway, we're not going to change the driveway with anything, and it's going to slope away from her house. The addition that we're adding, the twenty-foot addition, complies with the bylaw, turning radius is more than enough for the cars to turn around, so it's just a drainage issue, which the builders during the construction would make sure that it's not going to go through her property.
Can I just, you know, we're all homeowners, so we know how eaves and eaves troughing and discharging works, can, can we ensure that when you put eaves troughing on the addition, that the discharge is, the output of that isn't into the driveway, is somehow into the backyard, into your property, is that something?
Yes.
You would be willing to do?
Yes, exactly.
I think that might help address some of your concerns, perhaps not all of them, but that might, your, your concern about the addition and what the addition itself might do to your, your problem, if we can at least ensure that the addition doesn't add to your problem, in fact, helps address it, maybe that's something the, the proponent could undertake to do.
Sure.
Okay, now, wonder if we can include that in our?
I don't know, I think that's, that's outside my, our realm, isn't it? But.
No, it's a construction issue, when they apply for permit, they have to comply to all the, OBC, all the site, site control, all the land control, they have to comply.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, I mean.
Yes, the permits, uh, building permit stage will consider that.
I do not think that we can just single out one thing that they have to comply, they have to comply.
With everything. Yeah, I was just trying to address the, the neighbor's concerns, and maybe that some covenant or, or intent to do that might help. I don't, I don't think we can, but.
Yeah, so, I'm going to move a motion to approve, for approval with the Urban Forestry Condition Number Two.
So, motion to approve? Second to that?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Reed, and all those in favor?
Thank you.
Application is approved. And we move on now to our three-thirty time slot, thank you for your patience to everyone in that time slot, and, we have, just to recap with, with those that are here, items forty-two, twenty-two ninety-nine Dundas West, and forty-six A, B, and C, those items are held down until we have gone through the uncontested items, so we'll begin with item forty-one, nineteen Binns Carth. Ask the applicant to come forward now, please.
Hello?
Good afternoon. May I ask you to state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name's Michael Boxer, and I'm the architect working with the owners at nineteen Binns Carth.
Thank you very much. On this application, committee has before it, copy of plan, survey site, plans, floor plans, elevations, correspondence from Peter Laflamme, the applicant, copy of the package provided to the neighbors from Peter Laflamme and Karen Khalil, the applicants, also, we have an email, email correspondence from Heritage Preservation Services, City Planning, and staff reports from Tree Protection, Plan Review, Urban Forestry, and Heritage Preservation Services, and in support, there are sixteen form letters, signed by owners on Binns Carth and Glen Road. So, questions for the applicant?
Just one simple question, can you tell me the existing FSI of the house?
Yes, it's one point zero three.
Okay. I'll move a motion.
Yeah, I'd just, yeah, sure, just commendation, I was looking at your consultation, or your client's consultation plan, it looked quite robust, and, you know, it's good to see that kind of consultation going on for these kinds of things, it was, it helps your application when that happens.
Yeah, agreed, that's commendable, and I think there are a lot of similar-sized houses in the area, so I, I move to approve. Yes, with the, you're aware of the heritage planning condition?
Yes, we are.
For the November fourteenth letter, so, subject to that, and the Urban Forestry Condition Number Two.
Thank you. Second to that motion, Mr. Clay, seconds. All those in favor? Application is approved.
Thank you.
And next is application forty-three A and forty-three B.
Good afternoon, committee members, Mr. Chairman.
And 44A and B, too. We'll sort of do these as a package, but they are two separate applications, they'll need two separate motions, but I'm going to ask you for a presentation on this, just to point out what your objective is, what you're trying to get to.
Hey, so my name's Graham Barrett, I'm the agent for the owners of both 393A and 395 Arlington Avenue. Here to request permission for consent for two lot additions. If you can see here, the current configuration in orange is 395, in blue is 393A, as they exist at the moment. So, Part 1 and 4 would combine to become 395 Arlington, and Parts 2 and 3 would combine to become 393A Arlington. So the new property line would be the pink line. So this would allow for two regular rectangular-shaped lots. The home at 395 Arlington will remain as existing. There's a garage that currently straddles both lots, it will be demolished. There is an existing barn in the rear of 395 Arlington that will also remain... Actually, that's technically 393A Arlington at the moment, but it will be 395. There's this existing barn, it's somewhat dilapidated, but it's currently not being used for anything, it may be used for storage if possible, or torn down at some point in the future. At the moment, the owners don't wish to incur the additional costs for demolition, so it's just being left as is. All variances on 395 Arlington Avenue are the result of the new lot line location or their existing conditions. The location of this lot line was determined by the existing location of the home on 395 Arlington and a lack of desire to alter it. There is a small bay window bump out on the south side, the owners had contemplated removing it and moving, being able to move the lot line a little closer, but it didn't really make much sense, so they are leaving it as is. Consultation with planning staff has been done throughout this process, and adjustments have been made to the proposed dwelling on 393A Arlington. And as it stands now, planning has no objections, and the variances are all fairly minor. This consent portion of this application was meant to go to a delegated decision back in September, but it didn't, I'm not entirely sure why. And as we are today, I'm not sure if you've been informed, but our application technician wrote up the public hearing notices based on old plans, rather than the ones that were submitted after discussions had been had with staff. So several variances. Everybody's aware of this situation? Okay, then I won't go into that. In addition, I personally delivered letters to 10 nearby homes advising them of the proposal and providing contact information, should any neighbors have questions or like to get in touch, but I haven't heard back from anybody, so all good, I have to assume. I noticed we have an urban forestry condition, requiring permission to injure or remove a city tree, and I'm not entirely sure what tree that's referring to, there's a very small one in front of 395, but if that's a condition that needs to be met, then we can chat with forestry. Beyond that, the configuration of these lots, as you can see, is very odd and clearly a relic of times gone by. 393A Arlington is pretty much useless without this addition of Part 2, the removal of Part 4. Basically, we're trying to normalize this situation and build a new single-family dwelling. So, staff are unopposed, neighbors are unopposed, proposal suitable, I believe this passes the four tests. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions for the applicant?
Through you, Chairman. I have to serve finally question, I guess. Is after the severance, would the owner of 395 have obtained the ownership of the barn? And they later on, they demolish it, we know?
It's the same owner who owns both, with a different partner on each.
After the severance, they allow, they assume that there might be different ownership?
So once that portion is assigned to 395, the barn would go with it, yes?
Oh, of it, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll be dealt with in the future in one way or another.
Just a question, just confirmation, I'm just trying to figure out from the various bits here, what the final frontages are for each of the two lots?
Sure.
The original thing, it was 8.67 and 4.11? Is that correct? I'm just struggling to find the right numbers here.
Should be 8.67 and 6.57.
Okay, so 6.57...
Yeah, 6.57 on 393A.
Right. And 8.67 on the other?
Yes, sir.
Existing.
Sorry, let me just pull that up.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we've got the right numbers here.
Well, it's not a variance on the public hearing notice, but the draft R that I have shows...
Yeah, I'm just, that's where, on the revised one, variance number nine has one lot at 6.57, but I can't, maybe I'm missing it, I can't see where it speaks to the other lot frontage. Am I missing it? Someone find it?
I believe it's 8.67, and there's no variance required for it.
Ah, okay.
And 393A would be the 4.11 plus 2.46 of Parts 2 and Part 3, added together, which is 6.57.
Right, okay. So the 4.11 was the old?
Right, that'd be the existing frontage of the blue section there.
Right.
Okay.
Gotcha.
It's a very unusual lot configuration. I'm curious of the history.
So would that have been a 50-foot lot originally?
I couldn't tell you.
I'm putting your math to a test.
Yeah.
All right, then, if no further questions, perhaps we can move to a motion on this application on... We'll do... Can I actually take one vote on both applications? Madam Deputy Secretary? Okay, so we'll do them separately.
They're both going to have the same standard consent conditions, so that could be one motion, and then 44B has urban forestry 1 and 3, and 45B, I believe, has urban forestry 1 and 2.
45's the next one.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking for... Sorry, 43 has no variance conditions, 44 has variance, conditions 1 and 3 on the variance.
The revised, yeah.
Do you want to make sense of that?
Do you want to do one motion, and I can craft it, if you trust me?
Yes, I will.
Are you clear with, you know, understand what variances are going to be attached and the consent conditions that will be attached? Because they're just going to do one blank motion?
Right, so it's the revised list of variances for 393A, the original list of variances for 395, urban forestry for both, and 393A Arlington, the new construction, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and the conditions for the consent you mentioned are...
Standard. Just the standard ones, with the tax certificate showing that taxes are paid?
Right.
Your draft reference plans have to be reviewed by engineering and then deposited, and then you give us copies, and then there's just, they're just all related to finalizing the consent.
Okay.
Are you going to move that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move a motion to approve or join if 43A, B, and 44A, B, with the standard consent requirement you have to meet, and also with urban forestry condition applied to 44B.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion? Mr. Reed, thank you. So, all those in favor? Your applications are approved.
Agreed, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. And we move to 45, A, B, and C, and ask the applicant to come forward on 45, please. Please state your name and address.
My name is Bonnie Tang, I am the agent for the owner for this application for 285 Gleamount Avenue.
Thank you very much. Now, on 45, Parts A, B, and C, committee has before it copy of draft plan of survey, copy plan of survey site plan, floor plans and elevations, covering letter from Dan Stone, the agent. That includes two photographs of the property, a drawing of the proposed semi-detached building front and rear view, aerial view, parcel fabric mapping, and examples of similar minor variance approvals in surrounding area. We have email correspondence from Development Engineering, Engineering and Construction, and External Liaison, Right-of-Way Control Center from Bell Canada, plus a staff report from Tree Protection and Plan Review, Urban Forestry. And there is a letter of interest and/or concern from Reza Asad-Dikia at 281 Gleamount Ave. So, would be like a presentation on this, committee members, to get an idea of what it's about?
I wouldn't mind.
How about a brief presentation, please, just to give us a sense of where you're going with the consent?
Okay, so our proposal is just to...
Could you begin by putting up the site plan, please? On the overhead, and that'll give us something to refer to.
Okay, so our proposal is just to demolish the current single-detached home and redevelop it with a three-story semi-detached building. This sort of development is not unusual to the area, there's been a lot of semi-detached and single-detached homes in the neighborhood zone. The reason why we're proposing for a semi-detached is to increase chances for affordable housing, allowing people to be able to purchase a home. It would be a lot more affordable than for them to purchase one single-detached home, so it would also increase density in the area. Directly to the south of the subject property, there's actually a triplex, and south of that triplex, there was actually an application also for minor variance and consent. I believe that is, that was also located in the cover letter, and that one is 281 Gleamount Avenue. So they've also demolished a single-detached and redeveloped it with a semi-detached home.
Thank you.
I only have one question, regarding the variances, the variance number 11 for 45B.
The 30.
It says, mention the deck that is, or a platform, is 10.55.
Yes.
Where is it? In plan, it doesn't seem to be that big, but...
So on the plan, it's shown as a rear deck.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where is that? Is it on the roof?
Second story.
Yeah, it's 103 on that. That stack is 10 meters?
Yeah, so that jack is, that jack is 10.55 meters squares, square meters.
Look at the dimension.
Yeah.
Could you point that deck out to us on the...
Oh, yeah.
On the site plan, please, because it is a substantially large, second-story deck.
Yeah, it's like so, they show it would be...
Is there one of those on each side of the semi? Both at 10.55?
Both the same side.
So total of 21.1?
Yeah.
Built together?
Mm-hmm.
It's quite large, yeah. What provision have you made for overlook issues resulting from a deck that large into neighboring properties?
We haven't received any objection from neighbors of any sorts or concerns. Even with a deck that size, we actually do meet the setbacks to the rear yard, so in that case, there's not as much of a, an impact to the surrounding neighbors.
Do those decks go out from a bedroom, or do they go out from, in other words, are they places where, you know, a party might take place, or are they more decks that would go out from a bedroom?
This should be the first floor.
It's a, they're second story, no, these are second-story decks.
Yeah, it's on your first level plan, there's a bathroom and there's a deck, that's the one that I'm talking about.
Is the, one is, sorry, the plan A is 002?
No, 103, A 103.
On 8401, it's at grade.
Yeah, and then, and then there's another one up there, right?
Oh, yeah.
The first floor, then, you have another deck, right?
Yes, that one would be from the bedroom, yeah. But that one is...
Sorry, that's the one that's 10 square meters?
Apparently not, the one that below, which I cannot see, that I mentioned is...
Number 2, this is variance 11.
I think we're looking for some clarification here, so what's the size of the second-story deck?
I believe it should be the, it should be that 10.55, because right now, it's 2.3 by 4.4 meters. So the one on the first floor, that rear deck, is 5.93 square meters.
On the first floor?
That one is Plan A 101.
So the upper deck is bigger than the lower deck?
The upper deck that we're asking variance, yeah.
The upper deck is much larger, and there's two of them together, two of them on the two sides of the semi.
But it's mostly wide rather than deep, is that...
Yes. So the only reason why the first floor rear deck is smaller is due to that stairway walkout. So the second story has that full rear deck for amenity space.
Okay. Have you had discussions with 731 Cosburn?
No, we have not.
But there's nothing on record, so you haven't consulted with them?
No.
Do you think that that property would be impacted by this proposal?
I mean, the notices have been sent out, so we haven't really heard of any negative comments from them.
So you didn't, beyond the notice, you didn't do any consultation?
No.
And you do not receive any support either, right? There's no better reports?
No.
These lots are narrower than they are now, do you have an idea of the finished inside, the finished width of the units?
Sorry, what?
Like, how wide will the units be when you're inside? 14 feet?
Are you talking about depth of the building?
I'm talking about when you walk in the front door?
You walk in.
Of one of these semis?
Um...
How wide will that room be?
Sorry, I just have to take a look at the plan?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, take your time.
The outside wall, the outside wall is 14 feet and some inch... The outside wall, the outside wall is fourteen feet and some inches, but I do not know the inside.
Okay.
You see, that's...
Probably twelve and a half, thirteen feet.
Yeah, you have minus two walls, yeah.
I do not know the answer to that at the moment.
I think it's somewhere between thirteen and fourteen feet, probably. Jim, just help me out.
Are you asking for a severance?
Yeah.
On the set... I know we hear several severances, but setback from the front? Are you asking... I'm just looking to see whether there's a severance request there. Setback from the rear, but anything from the front, or you're good there? Uh, setback for the rear, uh, and the sides, but you're in compliance on the front of the lot?
For the front... Uh, yes, for setback, yes. We're actually... We are proposing six point eight meters for the front setback, and the required is six.
Right, okay, thank you.
One of the... For the unit, the newly created lot to the south as the driveway...
Yeah.
There's a very high impervious surface on that front yard. Have you considered permeable pavers for that, or would you be open to considering that? Instead of asphalt or other solid paving?
For the one with the parking spot?
Yeah.
Possibly would have to talk to the owner about it.
Sorry, you'd have to talk with them about that? You think they're...
Um, for that, like the permeable park driveway.
If we put that in as a condition, do you think that would be a problem?
That would... No, that would be okay.
Okay. The... I'm concerned about this in that the two semis are very large, and in terms of front yard setback, I'm concerned about the overbuild issue here. Now it seems to me that there may be an overbuild issue. And it's a result of... A result of...
In terms of the floor space area, floor space index, there's actually an example quite close, one zero five, one oh seven Virginia Avenue. They were approved at one point sixteen times the law area, and we're requesting for one point two times the law area.
One point two.
Yeah. So point four.
Yeah.
Or point zero four.
Okay. I think we're struggling. Part of the struggling is that, you know, almost individually, these don't seem egregious, but then when you combine them all, it just seems... Harsh.
I have the same feeling about the cumulative effect. What I feel a little bit of concern is that the number of variances is up to twelve, and I just get... There's a report, planning report, to explain that, because I feel it would be better. And the other concern I have is although you have done some research in the nearby developments, but you haven't actually talked to the neighbors. And I... At that, I don't get concerned, but I think I'm not too sure what other...
I hear what you're saying, but I don't know, I'm inclined to support it. I think it's... There are a bunch of similar kind of situations in this area where lots have been divided.
Yes.
And yeah, they are smaller units, but they're smaller units, right? I think that necessarily... I think the fact that it is on a corner does give it a bit more breathing space, right? That it's not... Doesn't have neighbors on all sides. So I'm inclined to...
Okay, then, so are we ready to go to a motion? I think we'll deal with... Why don't we deal with the consent first, then we can go to the minor variance applications after that, so... On the consent itself... To obtain consent to sever the property to two residential lots. Is there a motion on that?
Sir, I'd move the motion to approve the consent. And is that... Is that urban forestry one and two? Or just the standard... Okay. Subject to the standard consent conditions. Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Chang, moved by Mr. Reed. All those in favor of the consent portion of the application? The opposed?
Oh, sorry, I supported. Pardon me.
All right, moving on to number eight twenty-eight, which is the first of the minor variance applications. To construct a new three-story semi-detached dwelling with a front parking pad on the retained lot created by the consent.
Just a couple of questions, Chair, on this one, if I could. Peter mentioned soft landscaping. If that were the case, would variance number four change? I mean, you've only really got twenty-five percent of the front yard as soft landscaping currently, but if it was to be permeable, would that change that percentage? No?
No, we were told not...
So I'm just... I just want to explore a little bit why that's only twenty-five percent. Is that... That seems low to me.
It's just due to the... We already tried to use the minimum dimensions for the parking pad, and that's just the number that we came up with.
So that means that everything in the front yard, with the exception of the parking pad, is off landscaping? It's just the parking pad isn't included in that calculation?
No, it's not included in that.
But if it's permeable pavers, then it's not included in the calculation, but it still is better than hardscaping?
Yes.
So we could satisfy ourselves that that percentage, while fixed in this way, actually changes?
Indeed. So do we have a... Have a motion on this, so that we can look at it? Look at it? Are there any individual variances that people wish to modify or to refuse, or do we look at them all as they are? Are we ready to go to a motion on this, eight twenty-eight?
I mean, I think we should do eight twenty-eight and eight twenty-nine together, probably, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Probably trying to do that.
So your coverage...
Urban forestry, other one, so...
I'm sorry, Chair. Coverage goes from thirty-five...
Forty-two.
Which is the standard to forty-two on both lots? Is it the same on both?
It is the same on both, yes.
I have no more questions.
So, yeah, I don't know what you guys think, but I'll put forward a motion to approve both.
Maybe, let's get into committee first, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Second into committee, and we're in committee now.
Yeah, my only... It's just incombin... I mean, I guess I'm satisfying myself as I go through the thought process, that this probably isn't remarkably different from many of these types of homes you see. I just find that when you start looking at ten, twelve different variances for each, as I say, individually, it seems quite fine, but when you... In combination, it just seems a lot, but I wasn't particularly persuaded by the affordability argument. Is it... I wonder if it's... Is it near transit?
Yes, it is. It's near a bus stop.
Near a bus stop? Not... But not higher-order transit?
No.
Again, I can't put anything substantive together in terms of my opposition, so I don't think I will oppose.
Ms. Chang?
Yeah, my opinion is similar, although it's a cumulative, it's looked a lot, that's why through a bit of the process, you might get more support to make it easier. But having said that, I do not have enough to oppose it, so I will support your motion.
So I would move a motion to approve, subject to the condition that the driveway is paved with permeable pavers.
Okay.
And is this the one where the urban forestry conditions one and two apply? Subject to urban forestry one and two?
Forty-five A is the first on this one and two.
So yes, move to approve with urban forestry one and two, and on the condition of driveway being paved with permeable pavers. That's right.
Thank you. Second of that motion, second by Ms. Chang. Yes?
Yes, I agree. I thought we were voting already.
All those in favor? You have your consent and minor variance application approvals. And so now we go to the first of the contested applications, and this segment, number forty-two, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
May I ask you to state your name and address, please?
Sure. I'm Joe Lobko. I'm an architect with DTA Architects, engaged by the city of Toronto to assist them with the matter at Fifty Park Road here in Toronto.
Thank you very much. And to those here to speak in opposition, good afternoon. May I ask, how many of you wish to speak? You'd be asking... All three of you going to speak? Okay, all four of you wish to speak? You're speaking in supportive?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, okay. All right, then amongst the other members, do you have... You've appointed a spokesman from amongst your number? Spokesperson? No? Have you... Is any one of you acting as kind of a spokesperson for the group? Not really. And you understand, we're happy to hear all three of you speak, but we would ask you not to repeat the same items, the same material. So in view of the number of people who wish to speak to it, I am going to limit your time to three minutes each. So before us on this application, committee has the following: copy plan of survey site plans, covering letter from Joe Lobko, the agent, correspondence from Jennifer McGowan, agent, email correspondence from community planning, city planning, and support correspondence from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have support correspondence from eight persons, or we're placing no opposition, quite a number of support correspondence.
I'll just ask... Another letter that...
Another has come in, thank you. You could present that to... And, sir, are you one of the... Are you... Can I ask your name, please?
John... John Schafter. I... My colleague who left, or friend who left, sent in a letter, and it's maybe a third document that you might not have got yet.
Very good, okay.
Five Alhambra.
Thank you very much. All right, then, let's proceed with the applicant's presentation, and you have here five minutes.
Sure, thank you. Our firm's been engaged to assist the city of Toronto in implementing a homeless shelter at twenty-two ninety-nine Dundas West, near the intersection of Blor Street, in close proximity to subway station. It's an existing building that was built in the mid nineteen thirties as a manufacturing facility. It's had many uses over its long life. It's a concrete-framed building. It's an MCR zone that allows for a wide range of uses, including a homeless shelter. And so city staff, under the direction of city council, to address the homeless crisis in our community, have identified this site to be a new shelter. That work is underway, demolition is now underway, interior demolition, and we have a building permit. That project's in process. We're here today to discuss a proposal to occupy the roof and to widen and enlarge one of the elevators to improve accessibility for the facility. The intent of the application is to allow... To do only enough work on the roof to enable occupancy, so that we have a terrace for clients, and we have a terrace outdoor for staff. In order to do that, we have to ensure that we have two proper exits coming to the roof level. Those do not currently exist. There's one under-qualified exit, shall we say, that needs to be reinforced. We need a whole new exit at the front. We also then need to... Are proposing to enlarge one of the elevators to really enhance accessibility. Both elevators are quite tiny at the moment. The facility will have about eighty beds in it, and so movement up and down and accessibility in the facility is really critical. The facility... The opportunity to have outdoor amenity space on the site, given that the site, the building occupies the entire site, is critical to its program's success and to its fit into the neighborhood, quite candidly. We've done our best to mitigate privacy and overlook concerns. You'll notice that the terraces that we've identified are well back from the parapet edges. We've got seven-foot screens that are designed or selected to minimize overlook and to maximize kind of long views, direct views, but not direct or, you know, close views down into neighbors. And we're... We want to protect privacy in both directions, candidly. In order to do all of those things, four variances are triggered, and I'm going to just go through them quickly. The first variance deals with density. So again, the building's built in the thirties. The density by law of four times maximum coverage came along sometime after that. The variance is for three point nine two times residential density rather than three. Note that the overall density allowed is four times, and we're under that limit, and we are in fact reducing the density in the building as a result of the project. So the square footage in the building is not increasing because of adjustments we're making. Even though we're adding ninety square meters to the roof, there's actually a net reduction in density for the facility as a whole, and you'll note that in the statistics. The second variance is because we are allowed to make a roof extension up to twenty percent of the frontage of the building. You'll see that our layout, which is, we think, the minimum, gets us up to thirty percent. And in the material you have, there are two perspective views that show you that reddish color of the impact of that additional frontage. The third and fourth variances I'm going to group together. It's the angular plane, the forty-five-degree angular plane provision, and the seven-and-a-half-meter separation distance between an MCR zone and a residential zone. Both of those zoning provisions brought in in the late nineties continue to be updated. Again, the building was built in the thirties, and we included two different cross-sections at two different points in the laneway. Our point there was that anything we did to the building would impact those much newer provisions. So we took the measures to minimize the impact on all sides and ensure that any additional bulk on the roof level was concentrated to the middle of the roof. One other thing I would note is that we went through a range of examination of various elevator technologies available to us. We chose an elevator technology that minimizes the impact by having machine roomless technology, for example. As a whole, we believe that these variances are largely a result of the historical condition. The official plan and the zoning bylaw allow for this use on this site. It's a perfect site for the need identified, quite candidly, and the work's underway. The question is, can we occupy the roof and make this facility really work and really fit into the neighborhood properly? Thank you. Thank you.
Caitlin McCarthy, 45 Alhambra Avenue. Okay. So before discussing some of my points, it is important that I provision some background to the time leading up to this committee meeting today. Many of our residents first learned of this potential purchase of 2299 by the city of Toronto during the 2018 fall municipal election. In early March 2019, some of the residents of Alhambra Avenue received word either through their neighbors' friends that the city of Toronto would complete purchase of the building, and that with the completed purchase, renovations in a comprehensive community engagement process would ensue. In the over 6.5 months that followed, talk on the street was around when the community would be engaged, informed of what was going on. Remarkably, despite evidence that the building was being worked on and evidence that tenders had been put out for costly remediation, there was no community engagement. The only meeting held by the city in regards to the property was held at Howard Park Public School on October 23, a meeting relative to this committee of adjustments application. It should be noted that news of this meeting came by way of a neighbor just a few days before the meeting. On inquire to many of the neighbors, particularly some of my immediate neighbors, who like me back onto the laneway and are in close proximity to 2299 Dundas West, they were also unaware of the meeting on the 23rd. As like me, they had received no notice, and only on informing them were they aware of the meeting. While my busy work-life schedule was not conducive to my attending the meeting, I nonetheless attended. And I guess because I have a shortage of time here, I'll advance, I had more points to discuss. I'll advance to the character of the neighborhood. Many of the homes on Alhambra Avenue date back to the early 1900s, and over the years have seen varying changes made to enhance and modernize the home, modernize the homes. The residents on the street, by and large, have been longtime residents, upwards of 10-plus years, and probably a span of up to 50 years on Alhambra Avenue. And as residents of this long-established community, for those living on the east side of Alhambra Avenue, there is a public laneway running behind the properties. And sorry, I'm running out of time here, so. Let's see. Many of the mixed-use properties on the east side of laneway are combined commercial residential, some possibly not much used for residential purposes, such as the store, baby store called Maclum's. One consistent characteristic of the properties is that the buildings which front on Dundas Street West are all located a substantial distance back from the laneway and from the abutting neighborhood comprised of residential homes on the east side of Alhambra Avenue. Two exceptions to this are 2295 Dundas West, which is a boxing gym.
I will advise you to begin to wrap up, please.
So, I guess I'll have to move to privacy. During the time that the building was used as medical offices, the usage of the windows at the back were not being, impacting the neighborhood. Speaking to the roof, rooftop addition, from a privacy, privacy perspective, both the windows and the rooftop amenity space significantly impact any ability for me to enjoy the exterior or interior of my home at the back. There would be no ability to have any privacy, given the height of the building, the addition of the rooftop space, adding another 10 feet in height would look over my, into my property, and the proximity of the windows to my residents and my neighbors would have, would make having private space either in our backyards or within our homes impossible.
Thank you very much.
I have a number of pictures as well that I can share.
Your time is up now. Are there questions for the speaker? She cited privacy issues. You can put your pictures up and just leave them there, yes?
Can I just, Chair, just for point of clarification, I appreciate that you're concerned about the rooftop patio. It sounds also like you're concerned about the building's use, period. Is that true or not?
At this point, I've come here to present my concerns about my privacy, which is-
But you mentioned like windows and as well, so you're concerned about the operation as in its whole, as opposed?
I don't know that I can say that, and I have to apologize, I'm not feeling well. I awoke unwell, and I, if anyone's witnessed, I-
It's okay. I was just trying to clarify what your, sort of nature of your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. You can put up your photographs if you wish and just leave them there while the next speaker comes to the podium.
I have quite a few.
Why don't we circulate them?
I'd like to get them back.
If you'd like to submit them, that's fine. Would you care to submit them?
Circulate them, yeah.
We'll give them back to you.
Yeah.
You can come here. We'll give them back.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name is Sandra Kramer, and I live at 2287 Dundas Street West.
Sandra, good afternoon.
And I know you ask us not to repeat ourselves about privacy.
I'm just going to ask you, I'm going to make a little point to you, and that is, you can address your comments to the impact this is going to have, as proposed, if it was to happen. What is the impact that you're concerned about?
Privacy, 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 and noise. There is no privacy, and I know you ask us not to repeat ourselves, but this is huge. They can see into my living room, into my bathroom, into my bedroom, into my backyard.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add?
Excuse me, we'll go without interruption, and there's no clapping.
I have a question to the applicant. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you tell us where your house is in relation to proposal? It's on Dundas, where you're south of it?
On Dundas Street, just a couple doors down.
Couple doors down.
Fine, thank you. Next applicant, please. Or next speaker, pardon me. Please come to the podium. Let us know what the impact will be on-
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm here to voice my concerns, and I believe in democracy. I live right behind this proposed new shelter. My name is Mary Synopsis, and I live at 51 Alhambra Avenue. I'm advocating for women, and I believe that I have the Women's Coalition behind me on this. Let me tell you in a brief statement what this area is like for me, living here for over 20 years. High-crime area. I do not wish to be victimized by 80 men living behind me while I am sunbathing in back of my garden, using enjoyment of my property. This is unfair, this is unjust. This is psychological safety, and there's fear as well, and harm. Harm to women and children, children who are using the laneways, playing hockey, walking with their dogs. Homeowners using their garages to use their cars. Every day, as a woman, as a woman, in that area, right behind my house, I'm always victimized, three times this year, being followed. Other women as well. I want to have the enjoyment to be able to shop, to go around that shelter, proposed shelter, that's 80 men. I want to have the enjoyment to be able to shop, to live in freedom, as this country is. And knowing all this, I do not wish to be lured by 10 windows at the back, a patio new unit being proposed. Blah, 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 as you know. This will have significant impact on us, as a woman, and as the Charter of Rights and Freedoms under these guidelines. We need to do more and to be more aware of these misfortunes in our community, of break and enters that have just happened this last month. Store owners have complained to me while I walk down on Ronsonsville's Avenue, telling me, and my friend has also, has had, has had high concern that there's four to five storefronts that have been vandalized. Homeless people have been breaking through and stealing, stealing as well the money from the stores and things that are in the store, as you can imagine. This should not be happening. I should be living my senior years as I'm entering in enjoyment, okay? Contributions of such nuisances, such as further harassment by aggressively demanding money while walking to the stores, we would like to see, as a community, a better community, by respect, by privacy, by safety, psychological harm. These objectives of me being victimized is not necessary. Turn this into a seniors' low-income home, or a hospice for the dying, because soon we will die and be old. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for, from panel members to any of these speakers? I'm sorry, there's, I'm sorry, there is another speaker. Another speaker. And you, sir, too, are limited to three minutes.
Thank you.
But you have three minutes to address us.
Thank you. I'm one of the people who submitted. My name is John Schafter. I live on 5 Alhambra, at the south end of the lane. There has been strong feelings, which you've heard, about the shelter itself. One of the concerns has been to make sure that it's a place for people to go who live in the shelter, because there's a sidewalk on the front, on Dundas West, and our lane on the back. And there's been a meeting that's had with the architect in the neighborhood at Howard Park School. And we were listening, people who are concerned that people would be congregating in the lane, listened carefully to the architect's presentation. And if the shelter is going to be there, it makes great sense, which is why there's so many names of support, to have a rooftop deck with a wider elevator so people can easily get up. And by having it high, it will make it better for the people in the building, and it will mean that people don't tend to congregate in the back lane, where there's a concern for the length of the lane of people congregating and people playing ball hockey, et cetera. So there are a lot of people who are supportive of the wider elevator, the rooftop deck. I paid close attention to the design of the rooftop deck. It's a tall building and with a parapet setback, and the staff area at the back. And the fact that windows at the back of the building, if I'm not mistaken, are not rooms for the people who are there. Am I correct in that? So the windows that face into the housing are not residential rooms. And with all that design consideration, we support, and the people who've signed these letters, support the wider elevator, the rooftop deck. With the screening, it's a sensible way, from my perspective, to make sure that it's good for the residents in the building, and will keep the lane free for people to drive and park and shop. And that's why there is that number of people supporting it. So you're in support, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to dash out. I'd like to hear the debate, but I've got to go. Thank you, and thank you. And we will continue to talk as neighbors.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, so at this stage, we've heard from those speakers, and is now the opportunity of the applicant to come in to rebut specifically those issues. We have issues that relate, much concerned regarding privacy, specifically with the rooftop deck in mind, and safety. So I'll open that up to the applicant to address, please.
Well, I think the summary you just heard, I'm not sure I can improve on that, quite candidly. I thought that was an excellent overview of the issues at play and the gist of the proposal. We are not here today to debate whether a homeless shelter will be existing on this site. That is a city council decision. Last I checked, it's a democratic body, and they've, they've provided priorities in terms of how we use our tax dollars. As you've also heard, and I would stress once again, we've taken a lot of care in the design of this facility to minimize privacy and overlook in both directions. It's critical. With respect to the gentleman's comment about the west-facing views, if you imagine this in your mind's eye, this is an east-west oriented site with Dundas on the east and a single-family residential neighborhood to the west, and MCR zoning to the north and south. The zoning bylaws are particularly organized in the official plan to deal with overlook and impact into the single-family residential zones. And we've positioned the client terrace purposely well away from that, into the middle of the building. It's got a complete block wall on two sides of it, so there is no way there is any visual overview in that direction. And into the south, we've protected for only long views by pulling it well back, eight to nine feet back at ranges across that face. And again, the nature of the screen material we're using is meant to mitigate views and overlook in both, in both directions. Everybody wants this to be a successful facility that integrates well, that helps address the kind of housing crisis we have in the city on a number of levels. I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question.
Go for it.
Do you mention something, maybe you can remind me? Mentioned that the height of the screening fence is-
Yes. Yeah, it's higher than me. Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to get better orientation, if I could. I'm looking at drawing A002. Is that the right one I should be looking at to see what the configuration of the, of the rooftop patio is?
Yes.
So help me out here-
I can put this on the screen so everybody can see if I-
So help me out in terms of direction, like which, which direction is which? Looking down, is that-
North is up.
North is up?
Up. Dundas is on the right-hand side.
Right.
The laneway is on the left-hand side.
Gotcha.
Alhambra is further to the west, or further to the left. Dundas Street West is immediately to the right.
So the residences' concerns, I would imagine, notwithstanding your concern about the facility generally, but appear to be overlook, and the westerly portion has, looks like that's where staff?
The staff terrace, yes.
So is that similarly screened?
It's similarly screened.
That's seven-foot screening?
Indeed.
Is it transparent?
Same material, same screening.
Is it, is it-
It's transparent. If you're looking right there, you'll get a view. If you look this way, you're going to sort of get an opaque merging of lines because of the density of the material that we're using.
But is it glass, or is it some-
No, it's a metal screen. We're wanting air to go through, and we need to keep it light. We don't want heaviness.
Right. So it's, I mean, that, okay, so that's for staff. And then the brown area is the elevator?
It's an elevator and elevator lobby. It's the minimum we feel we can provide to connect one of the exits so that when you come to the roof, we've just got an elevator lobby that you enter into, and then you immediately go outside. So no more space than necessary for that function to work. And then the green color is the second exit we are required to have in order to ensure we've got two means of egress in the event of an emergency. And it's the east face, or the front, or east face of that, that can only be 20% of the facade. And we're at 30.
And the blue is the area for the residents?
That's the terrace, yes.
The terrace, is that same height? Is it, is it rooftop height, or is it elevated?
Yes, rooftop height, it's not elevated. So there's a solid wall to the north. So view and overlook to the north, for example, there's a 12-story building to the north, an apartment building. So there already are tall buildings in the neighborhood that are looking down. And we are trying to mitigate that view, again, in both directions by having a solid block wall on the north face of that terrace. And it also mitigates wind impacts by doing that.
And the rest of it is utilities?
Correct, yes. All the gray, most of the gray, all the gray, is open roof except for the bottom left-hand corner, which is a small utility space.
So the screening to the south?
Yeah, it's at the edge of the blue line.
Right, that's seven foot?
Two-and-a-half meters, two, 2.9, so it's eight feet to nine feet. Eight feet at the west, nine feet at the east, away from the parapet.
So, I mean-
And seven feet tall, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you have to be pretty tall to see over, I guess.
Yeah, you're not, and, and you're also just, you have to imagine, the parapet's coming in front of you, so your view's not down. It's very purposely, we're coming back, so this is a view to the lake.
Right.
You'll notice that one of the letters of support is from the gentleman who in fact owned the property for the last two or three decades. And he was noting that the roof was a great place to just view the lake. So it's a long view that he was speaking about, and for the nature, this is supposed to be a place of healing. That's what we want it to become. And so having an outdoor amenity space is a pretty essential component of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then. At this point, committee will take the item into, into committee. And we'll move toward a decision. a decision on the application. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I think it's important that we remember that a shelter is permitted there, right? This can happen. It is happening now and it's going to happen and that's not going to change. And I think the variances that they're asking for today really improve the project, both for clients and I think for the neighborhood. So for me, it's, for me, I have wholesale support for this.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. And also by asking the question, is that eliminate the overlook problem possible time? So...
Very good.
Yeah, I'm not going to relitigate at all the council's decision to allow and support this facility. I think it's, I know the area, it's, it is close to transit, is walkable to shops, it's walkable to other sort of amenities, it's walkable to High Park. In my view, it's an ideal location for individuals that need a little additional care. So I'm not going to at all entertain any discussion on its propriety of using it there. I, similarly, I'm convinced by representations and letters in support of this, that this kind of amenity within the building is an important aspect of, you know, the residence' care and, and well-being. So I'm also convinced by the arguments that setbacks and, and the screening as such should address the majority of residents' concern. I, I was particularly compelled by the individual who suggested that, you know, a facility like this and the rooftop actually will help avoid having folks strolling through the laneway, which I hadn't thought of, but I thought that was a compelling argument as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I would, I would support the, the application.
Very good. Let us then go to, and move to a motion.
I'm happy to move approval of it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Clay.
There are no conditions, are there? No?
No conditions, I'll second that.
Second to that by Mr. Reed. Motion to approve on the floor. All those in favor? The motion is carried, the application is approved. And we move on to the next application, the final one of the day, which is the last tested application, number 46A, B, and C. Applicant, please.
Heidi Evangelista, on behalf of the owners, Ted and Deanna, of 88 East Lynn.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
On this application, committee has these materials before it. Copy of minutes from the February 27th public hearing, copy draft plan of survey, copy of survey revised site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have staff reports from tree protection and plan review of forestry, from the manager of permits and enforcement at parking, transportation services, and opposition letters from Beth Bennington, Heather Whitstone, Susan Gurney, Joel Krentz, Keen Moynihan, Laurel Kirby, Jennifer Veenboer, Philip Lanither, and Lisa and Robert Chapman. So, may I ask those who are here to speak in opposition, will you both be speaking or one of you? You both be speaking? Very good. Are there other speakers this afternoon? Just the two of you, okay? Fine. In that case, we will ask the applicant to proceed with your presentation, please.
This application was deferred in February. The original application was for a three-story modern home, a home the neighbors felt that did not fit in. That said, Deanna and Ted redesigned the home to include similar characteristics of homes in the area, community, and it is now a two-story home. I am in receipt of the letters from 47, 71, 82, 84, and 86 East Lynn. I joined in with this application in August whereby we had a community meeting organized by the point person, Keen, who is the neighbor at 86. And also at this meeting, we're neighbors along with the councillor Bradford's chief of staff, Mr. Mahan. And the home that was presented at the meeting is the home and the application that you have in front of you today. We are in receipt of the transportation report relating to the existing portion only, and we are in acceptance of that report. We have been informed by Mr. Bosley of transportation that a change to the front yard parking was recently made. And only lot widths of a minimum of 5.5 may have a front yard parking, and we are slightly under that at 5.3. However, Mr. Bosley did indicate and has advised us that this is an area that on-street parking is 200% allocated of available spots. I would like to add that planning is in support of these applications as we have tweaked the applications and they are now quite happy with what we have in front of us. So let's talk about the existing home. You have in front of you some variances to the existing home. And I would like to add that absolutely no changes will be made to the existing home other than we will be rebuilding the deck. The deck will be smaller than what it currently has. And as you see, that none of the variances do relate to the deck. All relate to the home in its current built form. And as I previously said, the parking will no longer be allowed and the whole front yard will now be landscaped. So let's move on to the proposed home. As I previously mentioned, the design of the home has not changed since the August meeting. Looking at the variances can be somewhat jarring as there are a few. It is through the interpretation, we received a new zoning examiner, some were missed on the first file, and we have a couple more now, and they relate to parking, our sidewall height. And this area is known as beaches, an area with compact residential lots with a very eclectic variety of building types and lot sizes, a mix of old and new homes that are two, two-and-a-half, and three-story homes. The new home reflects what already exists and has characteristics of other homes in the neighborhood and will not destabilize the neighborhood. You'll see from photos, majority of the homes in this area, neighborhood have main wall heights. You'll see that... There were too many photos for me to go around. I visited the site, there are too many to take, so I thought a 2D rendering showing you how we have characteristics, front peak at the front and then it slopes down. They all have main wall heights. The area in its entirety, like this, two streets, south, east, and west. So does this lend itself to the character of the neighborhood, to the fabric of the community? Absolutely. Our main wall height has been taken on the side elevation, if you refer to your side elevation, on the right side and on the left side, there's a peak near, closer to the front of the home. Well, that main wall height just relates to that particular peak. However, if you slope down, when the roof line slopes down, the remainder of that side elevation is 6.84 meters. And at the front, it's 6.08. This is an area where we are permitted 7.5. So again, I repeat, it is only to that particular peak. We have no overall height under the new bylaw. We do have a .26 variance under the old bylaw, and that is because it is taken from the grade adjacent to us, which is the park, and it's 1.2 meters lower. And that's why, and even with that, we only have a .26 under the old bylaw. We have a depth variance. The depth variance is taken from the mid of the average of the front yard because the adjacent home at 88 has a front yard porch. So it's taken midway from there and it's taken to the back wall. And that gives us that 18-meter depth. However, the house itself is 15.24. We're permitted 17. And what we've done is we have actually compacted the home so that we wouldn't, we didn't, we decided not to build to that 17 meters. We decided to make the home shorter so that we would not infringe in neighboring yards. We made the house shorter, therefore it gave us our side yard setback. So our side yard setbacks, even though we are requesting them, it does allow spatial separation, which allows for light, air maintenance. The eaves overhang is typical in the neighborhood because the tight side yards. However, I would like to point out that the eaves is designed to remain within the lot and does not encroach neighboring properties. Our FSI of .62, we're asking for an additional 39 square feet. We are allowed 1561 and we are asking for 1600, which is not an egregious size of home. To address the landscaping, we are willing to add as a condition that the existing parking pad be permeable paving to allow the water to seep through. And transportation made no comments to the proposed home, only to the existing, which we are in acceptance of. So now let's talk about the trees. So the trees in the park are well within the 2.4-meter tree protection zone and will be protected. The trees are along, along the northern lot line is well-known as a very invasive species called trees of heaven. Very invasive, not even a species on the city of Toronto plant list. But I would like to add, all trees are being protected, not one tree is being removed. If anything, more trees will be added. And we'll take that under advisement of forestry. These lands are designated neighborhoods in the official plan. Policies recognize that change within neighborhoods will occur over time and new development should reinforce the general physical patterns to maintain the stability of the neighborhood. As you saw from the photos, this home will not create destabilization. There are homes in this neighborhood, we have homes with dormers, we have homes with peaks, and this will not destabilize. It is keeping within the fabric of the community, maintaining appropriate streetscape that is compatible and will live harmoniously with homes in the neighborhood.
That is your time, thank you. First speaker to the podium, please.
I have an additional letter that came from one of the...
Good afternoon. Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Keen Moynihan. I live at 86 East Lynn Avenue, which is right next door to the applicant.
Next door, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tell us your concerns, please.
All righty. As you've heard, we were all here on a snowy day back in February, and at that time, the hearing was deferred because the applicants had not spoken to any of the neighbors about this project. Subsequently, we've arranged for two meetings to take place with our councillor Brad Bradford and his chief of staff. And, and out of that initial meeting, we expressed, certainly one of the biggest concerns was a privacy issue. The existing building was going to have a second and third floor balconies, quite large that were looking down into neighboring properties. So the applicants did come back to us and they reduced the overall height of the building and, and addressed those privacy issues. Nonetheless, the, the plans that they've come back to us with still request 12 variances. There's an effort here to maximize this, this building on this lot. It's going to be, well, we heard it's not going to be bigger than, than the new bylaws allow taller, but it's going to be wider, it's going to be deeper, it's going to have a bigger floor space. That's a huge issue. Certainly at least one of our neighbors has pointed out that, that lives across the street that they purchased because, or one of the selling factors was that they had a view of the CN Tower. Now they're going to lose that view. Moving on, another issue that was identified as being major to the neighborhood is parking. If you're familiar with East Lynn Park, East Lynn Avenue, there's a large park at the, at Damforth Avenue, and that park is home to many events, farmers' markets, festivals, sledding in the, in the winter, skating rink, that kind of thing. That, the street is, not just the street, but the neighborhood is constantly under parking pressure. People circle the neighborhood, park illegally in driveways, there's been accidents. Parking is really an issue in this neighborhood. At best, this, this proposal is going to result in one parking spot for two homes, creating more inconvenience for the existing residents in the, in the area. I do note that parking, that transportation has asked for what was already identified as an illegal parking pad to be removed from the plans. We, we have concerns about the trees. We know that forestry has visited. We don't understand why, maybe it's not requirement, but that whole north property line is lined with small trees. None of them show up on the plan. So presumably, they're all going to be destroyed. We think building right next to the park with those trees there is going to be very difficult to not damage or destroy the root systems of those trees. In such, then building a two-story building there, replanting trees, they're going to be asked to grow in the shade of that building. So we also have further concerns down the road about erosion that's going to take place. The structural integrity is a huge issue, particularly for myself. This building slopes considerably, I think you heard there's a six-meter drop from the front of the property to where the back of the house will be. The property continues to slope down to meet with the park. To the north side, it slopes into, into the park. And we are really concerned about disturbing that soil and what it's going to mean to not only the existing foundation of 88, which is attached to 86 East Lynn Avenue. It's been addressed a number of times, or asked, you know, why is there not a property there now? Why was there never a property built? Some people have suggested because the builder owned it and they always had bigger lots. Well, my understanding is the builder's lot was across the street and that's why there's a bigger lot across the street. The last point I'd like to make is, is about intent. Because there's been a very minimal amount of communication between the property owners and the residents on this street, there's some real concern here that these are, this is going to be turned into a rental property, an Airbnb, although the new ruling may, may fix that yesterday. And, you know...
We'll ask you to summarize, please, and finish up.
I'm, my, the last comment I'm going to make is, is again about just the communication. You know, one of the letters you've received from Jennifer and Philip, they're new residents on the street. On November 7th, when this notice arrived in their mailbox, they had no idea that this was going on. So once again, the applicants have failed to communicate their intent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce my neighbor, Beth, now. Heather?
Please.
Is, is it possible that I could use some of the pictures that are here? Is that allowed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So mainly, I guess, the...
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Sure. I could, my name is Heather Whitstone and I'm at 71 East Lynn Avenue. Yes, I did send a letter, too. Yes. So I'm across the street east and a little bit south. So there are many variances listed because I have two pages for each house, so I suspect you have the same. But I guess I'll open up with number three, which is the variance on the height permitted on exterior walls. So according to this variance that's listed, the limit is 7.5 meters, and the house will take 8.71 meters, so that's 1.2 meters taller than, than what is allowed. So that's exterior walls.
What will the impact of that be on you?
So if you look here... So if you look here... It was the picture of their house? Oh, it's underneath here. Very first picture, if you look here. So this is the present house. There is no house there in the lot that they would like it to be. So the 1.2 meters taller is actually 8.7 meters taller because there presently is no wall there. There is no house. There is only trees that are next to the park. So the variance, though, is minor in, if you look at the text, it's a significant variance because there's nothing there right now. And then if you also look on the map, when you come around from Danforth, the park is there, and the first house that you see is 88 East Lynn Avenue, and you see all the trees. You do not get this giant wall, which is reminiscent of the green monster in the baseball field. You actually get beautiful softscaping, which then, so you have the beautiful trees of the park, and you keep moving farther, and you come into their house, which is an eclectic house, like the rest of the streets on the house. You have lots of beautiful, different windows all the way down the side. And then, as we've seen from the other pictures, everyone else in the neighborhood is doing their best to keep the feel of the neighborhood. Our street is only one block long. All of the houses on the street look like this. We've had three renovations where the fronts have changed of the house since I've lived there for 13 years. But many of the people have done the additions or the altering of the house out the back, so it does not impact on the streetscape. So for me, though the height may not seem so great, I think it's a significant variance which does impact the nature of the street. So that's generally the one that I was... I did also comment about the trees. Now, when you look back at the picture from their house... It's true, the lot line, it closes to the park, those trees are scrub trees. There are three, three high-quality trees, two of them are ash, one is white, one is green. Ash borer is a problem in the city. They are considered to be above the 30-centimeter mark, so they, and the damaged place of where the roots will be will be impacted by the construction. There's no place that it wouldn't be because they're going to dig a big hole where that car is sitting right now. And I don't believe root, like, I don't believe roots just stop at the property line. So as far as, I think that's generally, everything is just the size of the exterior walls.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the speaker? No? In that case, we'll ask the applicant to return to the podium, please. And we are, from the two speakers, we have heard concerns about privacy resulting from second-story balconies, parking pressure, because these lots do not supply their own parking needs on-site. Consultation, this application was deferred in February for consultation with the neighbors, and the comments we've heard now are to the effect that consultation has been scarce. And also, concern about the general negative impact of the application on the feel of the immediate neighborhood. Could you address those concerns, please?
As I mentioned, we did have consultation with councillor Bradshaw's chief of staff, and we had further conversation with the councillor's office. Once we received the revised zoning review, I also shared the revised zoning review, all the plans, everything, with Keen, who was the point person and who I was directed to from the initial process. So we did confer and consult with them. The trees on the north property line, so we have, you have, Keen, you did not return my forestry sheet, my, the sheet that I gave you from forestry, my arborist?
Thank you. Applicant, you'll just your remarks through the chair, please.
My apologies, Mr. Chair, you're absolutely correct. So we had an arborist go to the site. What you see in front of you, there are two trees on the north, northwest corner, there are two trees, trees of heaven. Those are the two trees, they will remain untouched. Everything else you see, they're all vines. And they're all vines that have been there, and they come up every year and probably will continue to do so. The trees on the parkland, they're outside of the tree protection zone, they will not be touched. Actually, I also did let the neighbors know that one of them is diseased, and it should probably be reported, especially with our winters, you don't want the heavy snow and ice and a tree branch fall, especially that's on a path, close to a path. So structural integrity, we discussed this. And the structural integrity, so what we did was, again, I would like to note that we made the house shorter. We made the house shorter because the lands are quite undulating, there is a slope to the back. We put up the retaining walls. When this home will be dug, it will be properly shored. And the lands will, the dirt that is removed will be removed and will be taken off-site. So there will be proper shoring when this house is constructed. And there will also be proper hoarding measures to keep the area safe. We also did discuss the fact that we are willing to bring in a third party to assess 88, the existing home, and 86, which is Mr. Moynihan's home, and have that third party come in and make an assessment and a report, and take photographs, so that we do have that before and after, that, you know, once, before we start and after we dig. Just to, and that just keeps everybody safe. The intent, so it's mere speculation, you know, rental property, Airbnb, they may live in it, they have to decide, you know, we have to check, you know, economical feasibility. At once upon a time, yes, probably they wanted to live in it, but that home, they, whether they choose to sell that home and live in their existing home, or sell the existing home and live in the new home, that's their prerogative. It would be mere speculation on our behalf to make that assumption, and I don't think that's fair or just to the owners. The wall height, so the wall height, we changed the design back in February because the neighbors all said that the initial design did not meet any of the characteristics of the area. So what they did was, they went in the neighborhood, they checked the characteristics, they saw some houses have peaks, so we included a peak instead of a dormer at the front. We have homes in the neighborhood that you see, look closely on the sketch, all these homes have main wall heights. If we go around, all these homes have main wall heights. They still, they all have the same design that we are proposing. I would say probably 80-plus percent have homes of the design that we are proposing. And as I mentioned, that wall height is only for that peak. The remainder of that area, the wall height at the front of the house is 6.08. We're permitted 7.5. Our height is considerably lower than what we had proposed. And on the sides, the wall height on the sides is 6.8, going down from the 7.5.
I'll ask you to summarize, your time is actually finished.
I believe, I respectfully believe that the proposal that you have in front of you is suitable and is characteristic to what's in the neighborhood. We could build a home where we maintain the side yards and build a home that's 17 meters long. We chose not to do that to keep our neighbors in mind that when we're out in the back or when they're out in the back, they're not seeing this, the roof of the property.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant on committee?
So the render, so I'm just looking at the site plans. This is the June 24th. Is this the final design, these renderings and site plans? Elevations?
Yes.
And this is, so if I look at a side elevation, you're saying that that configuration is consistent with 80% of the homes in the area?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you.
What you're referring to, through you, Mr. Chair? Where the peak is just, the main wall height is just to this. However, you see how it slopes down? And here is 284?
Can you just approach, I'm just looking at this one here, is, maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. It's the new one or the old one?
Could that be the existing?
That's the existing.
Could that be the existing? Through you, Mr. Chair, possibly that may be the existing.
697, yes. Thank you. Clarify my confusion. The other thing, I thought, perhaps I misheard, when you were talking about the depth, I thought I heard you say that, so you say you reduce the depth of the proposed new detached dwelling? Did you hear you say that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have, we have our length of 15.24, which is from the front wall to the rear, from the rear wall. Our actual length is 15.24. However, the depth, because we have been asked to push the house back a little bit, and the neighboring home, which is the existing home, has a front porch, so the interpretation of the zoning examiner, he takes it from midway of that front porch, the average of the two, and he takes it to the back wall, and that's why we have that depth variance of 18 meters. However, the house itself is only 15.24 meters.
Right. Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And last thing, so there's no new curb cut? You're using the existing?
Well, there is an existing, yeah, that...
You're using the existing?
Exactly.
Sorry, serious. Must have said Siri, did I?
They always answer when you don't. There is an existing curb cut that will remain, and we are also amenable to, and they will be putting permeable pavers on that driveway, as I mentioned previously, so water percolates through.
You? And at this stage, let's take the application into committee and move toward a decision then. Do you care to begin, Mr. Reed?
I think it's always hard when you have a lot that has always been empty, right? And people that are used to that, especially when it's adjacent to a park. I have no issue with the consent to sever. I think that that should be a buildable lot. And I understand the communication hasn't been perfect, but I do think that some movement has been made to respond to some of the issues of the neighbors. And the variances are quite minor. I mean, I think a lot of this, if it gets approved, will come down to, you know, managing the construction process and that kind of thing because of the seeming sensitivity of the adjacent areas. So right now, I'm leaning towards approval of everything.
Yeah, no, I thought, I agree with both you. I think those are exactly the same thoughts that I would have.
Let us then deal with the consent first, and I'll ask for a motion on the consent itself, then we'll move to the minor variance applications after that. So on the consent, which has a forestry, forestry attachment to it, is there a motion?
Okay, so consent just by itself?
Consent by itself, okay.
Okay, I would move...
The forestry, the forestry list shows it as applying to 46A, but I agree with you. Variance, both to be...
We can do the variances together, maybe.
That is, is this subject to the consent?
That would be for the semi-detached dwellings. They're asking for a variance to have no parking, so they want to make sure that there is no front yard parking pads, and that any gravel that somebody could park on is to be removed. That's what that condition is about.
Okay, then, motion?
I would, I would put forward a motion to approve the consent.
Motion to approve the consent, second?
I would second that.
Second, Ms. Cheng? All those in favor? So the consent application is approved. Going to the first minor variance application, which is number 1016. Members for a motion on this one, please.
I would put forward a motion to approve and add the condition of urban forestry two and three, and also add that the driveway will be permeable pavers.
Mere pave.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
I would second that motion.
Motion seconded, Ms. Cheng? All those in favor? So 1016 minor variance application is approved. And we move on to 1017, the part two application.
And yeah, I guess I should just do it. Again, yeah, I move to approve. And Anita, should we be adding in the Transportation Services comment, subject to the Transportation comment of repaving, or not repaving, of getting rid of the gravel in the front yard of the retained dwelling?
Good, second to that motion?
I would second that motion.
Motion seconded by Ms. Cheng? All those in favor? So second application 1017 is approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. So I will ask for a motion now to terminate the hearing.
Happy to move that motion?
Motion by Mr. Clay, is there a second for that motion?
A pita.
Seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. Hearing is hereby terminated. Thank you very much.